We'll get started, almost. Okay, welcome to the January 25th, 2020 special meeting for our planning session. Madam Clark, roll call please.
The record will reflect that Councilmember Muldoon is on his way.
Fantastic, I appreciate that. He is, he'll be here in a couple of minutes. So, we'll do a pledge of allegiance. Jeff, would you mind leading it? All right.
Do you stand, please, and join me in saluting the flag of our country. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome. Just a couple of housekeeping items. We were in here, so this is being filmed and streamed on Newport Beach Television. I know a handful of folks asked me about that so that they would be able to watch this year, and so for those at home, thank you very much. This is a planning session, so it means that we won't be taking any action on any of the items today. We'll be talking about the overview of the year. Everything that we talk about, we'll come back in greater detail at some point down the road, but we want to be able to talk this through as a council, get a good sense of where we're going this year, and spend the time on a handful of issues that are larger and affecting the city in bigger ways. So, with that, we'll go into public comments on non-agenda items. Do we have any public comments on non-agenda items?
Mayor O'Neill, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I'm very pleased to see that after years of wandering through a desert of various venues, very ill-suited for holding public meetings, the planning sessions have finally come back to a room actually designed for the council to meet in and discuss matters. However, looking at the agenda, it's a little disappointing to see that during those years of wandering, the idea that the council needs to meet to itself candidly discuss what it wants to do during the year seems to have devolved, according to the agenda, in just hearing a report from the paid city staff as to what they want to do during the year. That said, as a non-agenda item, I noticed that, looking at the minutes of the last year's planning session, a couple of the council members did say they wanted the staff to focus, and themselves, on election reform. I would like today to add my voice to the many people who are suggesting that in the coming year, actually in the first part of the coming year, this council committed itself to actual election reform, by which I mean changing both the way we count ballots and the way we cast ballots. We currently have a very unfair, undemocratic way of counting ballots, totally arbitrary, in which we have a winner-take-all, no-runoff system that can be replaced by a much better one, and we have this strange system of "from district" rather than "by district" elections. I would suggest that the council commit to considering either totally erasing the districts that we have now, so that we have seven representatives that we all elect who all represent everyone equally, not focused on district, or go in the other direction and have voting by districts, where the people in the district get to vote for the person who purports to represent them. Both of these things require the council putting those options before the voters at a November election in an even year, because this would require changing the city charter. You have an opportunity this year, you won't have another opportunity until two years from now. I suggest you commit to opening this debate, getting something on the ballot, which you need to do, I believe, by August of this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, let's move on into the update on fiscal issues, which will be a discussion by our city manager, our finance director, and our harbor director. With that, I turn the mic over.
Just briefly, before we get started on this, I think there may be a conflict or two. I think Councilman Duffy is going to accuse himself on the harbor-related items. He doesn't have a conflict on all of it, but just out of an abundance of caution, based on his business interests. Is that correct, Councilman Duffy?
Yes.
Okay, anything else? All right, let's go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council. This is Dan Matuchewicz, your finance director. We've prepared a brief financial overview, and as the mayor suggested, it's very preliminary, and I hope to move through slides pretty quickly as we continue to monitor leading economic indicators heading into this next year. But ending the last fiscal year, we ended on a very strong note. You can see that total fund balance increased $2.7 million, but that's not the number I typically want to focus on. I'd like to focus that we've maintained our contingency reserve. This is an emergency reserve that we use to, you know, in the event of recession or any other emergency that would, you know, help us provide a soft landing. So it's a very important tool for finance and budgeting to maintain that level of reserve and maintain services in the event of some disruption. While keeping this reserve, we also were able to generate an $11.5 million surplus that we can apply to pay down liabilities and/or do neighborhood enhancement projects or other capital improvements. So, in the current year, the revenues are still very strong. You do see an aberration in sales tax. While it looks like it's down 1.4%, it's due to an aberration in what used to be the State Board of Equalization is now the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration. They had a glitch in their payment system, so we received a larger payment in the prior year, so it is just, due to the timing issues, makes it look like our 2020 year-over-year is negative, but it's not. The net result ultimately is a $4.1 million projected favorable revenue variance for the year, so that would, that'll be one component of our surplus for the end of the year. When we look at expenditures, a lot of words on the slides, but it basically boils down to, we're largely trending as normal on the expenditures. It's a bit early in the year to quantify what those expenditures are. They're usually significant. I would expect them to be muted just a bit due to a recent court case that we have, will likely have higher overtime obligation than normal, and I'm speaking to the Flores versus San Gabriel case. So, we do anticipate that to chew into our year-end surplus a bit. Moving into 2021, our outlook is still very, very good. We think we're still going to move into the year with a lot of momentum. Most notably, or, you know, one area that's probably worth mentioning is the transient occupancy tax. Did have the opportunity to speak to some of the hotel years, and they have a cautiously but optimistic view of next year, but we do, on the residential side, while it's a much smaller component of transient occupancy tax, they were still seeing double-digit increases in residential transient occupancy tax.
Sorry, Dan, on that last slide right there, that's what you're going to be using for the budget assumptions?
They are preliminary, so we may adjust them, nudge them up or down as we see, but that's kind of our base starting point. Do you have any concerns on?
No, I just wanted to point that out for my fellow councilmembers to make sure that they understood the purpose of this slide.
And this is what we'll be considering as we're developing the operating side of the budget too, is with these numbers in mind at this point.
Understood, and Ms. Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question on the other general fund revenue. Anything that we're watching there?
Thanks, I should have pointed that out. We usually don't include grants and donations in our projections, so we usually recognize those revenues when they come in, and that's what's showing the unfavorable variance or a decline of 1.6, but we...
Because of fewer grants compared to prior year?
No, it's just that we don't...
Recognize them at this point?
At this point, especially the donation side.
Okay, you'll wait and do that cumulatively?
We don't want to be presumptive.
Okay, got it, all right.
Okay.
So, it's not that we don't have our funding challenges. We're a very strong city, we have very strong reserves, but we do have our funding challenges, PERS most notably. There's been quite a lot of discussion on what the expected earnings rate should be. Earnings represent at least 60%, cover 60% of the pension costs, their investment earnings, and so while we decrease the discount rate, it actually increases the obligation of the employer, and you can see our accrued liability for CalPERS. As we reduce the discount rate, we're now over $1 billion of total liability. We, fortunately, our investment portfolio has increased at a faster rate than the liability, so our funded status still creeped forward, even though we're reducing, even though the discount rate has been coming down. So, that's important to note, that our funding progress, our funding plan, is working.
It's probably worth also noting that the last Finance Committee meeting, Newport Beach is one of only two cities in the county that actually saw a funded status increase between '17 and '18, and the reason he's using '18 is because there's a two-year lag on valuations, receiving valuations, and because of the way that we've been paying this down, one of only two cities in Orange County to see that funded status increase, and also one of four cities in the county to project a unfunded liability decrease in the coming year as well.
That's a very good point. So if you look at the 2008 unfunded liability, it's marked at 333, but by, while we roll those numbers forwards, or the actuaries rather roll those numbers forward, we're moving down to about 310 by the time we start the beginning of our next fiscal year, due to the fresh starts and the additional discretionary payments. So our funding strategy on our pension is working. And this is just a graphic depiction of, you know, so I did mention that our unfunded liability is at $310 million at the beginning of the fiscal year, or estimated, and it would be paid off by 2034. But both that prediction, as well as our pension costs, are predicated on the earnings rate, and this is the fly in the ointment, is when we look forward at investment earnings rates, they, there's that old adage, buy, you know, buy low, sell high. Asset investments are valued very high, and, you know, so we have a portfolio of 60% equities and stocks, they're all valued pretty high, everybody's feeling good today, but would you feel comfortable, you know, with that old adage, you know, buy low, sell high, do you, and where asset prices are already high, do you think there's a lot of room for continued growth over the next several years? And so, the other component is the fixed income side of the portfolio, and as we know, on Friday, the 10-year Treasury ended at 1.7%, so if you're fixed 40% of your portfolio is only earning 1.7%, and your equities are riding high today, the prospect of future growth is muted. So, we did a bit of sensitivity analysis to say, well, this blue line represents if CalPERS earns seven, and you can see we're at 67% today, and over the 10 years, we're expecting for them to earn something less than that, so we also looked at that, what would our funded status be at 6.1%, at 5%, and at 4%? And because of the actions that this council has made, even if we're, they only earn, on average, 4% over the next year, over the next 10 years, that our funded status still is increasing slightly. If all goes well, if they hit seven or close to seven, our funded status will continue to increase. If they don't hit seven, we will still have an unfunded liability at the end of that time, so we're still looking at ways to, you know, at the end of this time, pay off our unfunded liability, so we may infuse some additional capital during this budget as well to stay ahead of potential investment losses that are expected over the next 10 years.
All right, Dan, just a moment, Ms. Dixon.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just so, first of all, because members of our community are here, present, or listening, watching on TV, what our finance director just said is extremely important, so don't let anybody's eyes glaze over. Just to capture, if you would go back, please, Dan, to page, slide nine. This council since 2000 and the year before, starting in 2014, but with this council since 2015, we have been, through the surplus funds that Dan identified in prior year budgets, we have been aggressively paying down. When we say 2034, that has always sounded like so far off. That is in 14 years, that on this aggressive paydown, barring any economic, external economic calamity, we will have come close to zero on our unfunded pension liability. I mean, that is extraordinary, and I think I said this in December, when I commented on the excellent work of staff and our finance committees, that this will have, this aggressive paydown will have avoided, and these are Dan's numbers, $115 million in interest costs that we would have had to pay had we not, had we been sustaining a higher unfunded liability in 14 years. I mean, that's real time. It's amazing, and I'm not aware of any, other than a new city in South County that doesn't have the burden of 100 years of all the services and liabilities that we have had. This is just phenomenal, and it's, I just want the residents to know and staff to know that I certainly appreciate the work that has resulted in this disciplined financial management, so thank you, and I hope our residents really appreciate. Without tightening our belt too much, we keep this city looking beautiful, but we're able to aggressively pay down this significant liability in 14 years. It's amazing, so thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, Mr. Muldoon, and then Ms. Brenner.
Yeah, thank you. When we campaigned on this, what is now the old guard, Duffy, Diane, if you can believe that, when we campaigned on this, it was somewhat controversial, but not entirely, because the council before us, it was a slightly different philosophy, but everyone agreed we should pay down this debt as quickly as possible. The fresh start was done right before we took office, and we've been applying an extra surplus since. But I will say, this is, I think, one of the least controversial, most supportive measures that we've done on this council, because there's a universal feeling that debt is essentially not good for cities and municipalities, and that we should avoid carrying long-term debt. When I was mayor, many eons ago, I only had one individual who didn't like the way we were doing it, who, when I would speak to groups, and it's precisely for the well-thought-out reason that Dan had mentioned, which is sort of playing the markets, do we want to wait a little bit, is there a better time to get involved? The way I view that, though, is that's a risky game to play, because it's very hard for a council to show the discipline to put that money aside that's not getting a good return, and it's not getting credit for being in the till, for lack of a better word, from CalPERS, to put that money aside and not spend it on other projects. So, I'm going to thank my colleagues for continuing the discipline, and I'm, of course, going to be working with others to continue this trend, despite eyeballing economic fluctuations in the market, because I think those are just too unknown, and it's asking for the money to be used in ways that I would argue is not as wise. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brenner.
I'd just like to add that, in addition to what they've just said, that they've done this at the same time that they've maintained the exceptional high quality of our city and built new facilities as necessary, maintained the roads. We really have no true understanding of how fortunate we are in this community, and a city council member in another Orange County community who's very anti-taxes said to me they were going to have to raise taxes to fix their roads, and that she could take a chunk of the road into every council meeting, because their roads are in such disrepair. So really, the quality of our city and this financial integrity is pretty exceptional.
Mr. Avery.
Yeah, I agree completely with Councilmember Muldoon on those comments and how important it is, especially in good times for us to put money against this, which there's, we struggle with that, because there's so many compelling asks of the city, and so many things we want to do for the residents, so it just takes a lot of discipline, because politically, it's really nice to do that, it's good for our city, and we feel great about it at the same time. Maintaining that financial discipline is, I think, really important, especially in the good times, because CalPERS, in bad times, has had terrible years. What's, Dan, I mean, in the last downturn, what were the, some of the stuff was like 1%, below 1%?
There was a negative 23% year as well.
Right, so when I see this, and I'm speaking kind of as just, and I'm no financial guy, but the chances of this playing out, like we see it, you know, I think is highly unlikely, and so, but we're doing what we can, and my understanding is that we're able to do this because we budget so well, and we tend to generate a surplus, which we use to pay down that unfunded liability, so it's fairly painless to existing budget, and I think that's a great thing, and it's, it makes all kinds of sense, but at least for me, I sort of look at this and go, it would be wonderful if this graph works out, showing us meeting it in 2034, but my expectations, and I like to keep my expectations low, are that it may be a tough road, given what we all know about world events and what happens over time to the economy on kind of a repeat that's been going on for the last century. Thank you.
Thank you. One other real quick point of comparison, between '17 and '18, that most recent valuation, Anaheim's unfunded liability increased by $79 million in a year, so keep that in perspective as we're talking about other cities as well. All right, Dan, let's go to the next slide.
Okay, I'm going to come in on this one, and...
Oh, Alan, I'm sorry, we're not ready for public comment quite yet. We'll get there.
May I ask a question? On the very first page, the general fund reserves, there are several categories: restricted, committed, assigned, and non-spendable. What is non-spendable?
Thanks, Alan, we'll make sure we get an answer for you later. All right, go ahead.
Okay, I'm taking on this next slide here, and then you'll also see there's going to be a little bit of movement at the chairs, because as we go through different topics here at this point, we'll have different directors coming onboard and want to keep it moving. So, a good conversation on the pension, and I think we've done a great job here at the city of being disciplined on that, and it's been really important, because as we continue in recent years now, looking at how we staff and resource for services that we provide, is there is a changing employment landscape, you know, and we've seen it most recently with AB5 legislation that did get adopted by the governor in September and went into effect at the beginning of this 2020 year, which really puts into law the way you determine how an employee is considered for, whether they're a full-time employee or an independent contractor, so there's a lot of tightening that's going on there. At the same time, CalPERS has also continued to focus on this, to see whether, when public agencies are hiring part-time folks or contract employees, if, whether they really are PERS employees. So there's been a lot of movement in this area, which actually frankly makes it much more difficult to be more flexible in how we staff for our services. At the same time, I think a good part of this, and a good part of what's come out with pension reform, is that with the new PEPRA formulas and employees who come on after January 2013, is with the new formulas, the pension formulas are reduced, there is less cost there, the city's done a good job of working together to cost-share and have employees pick up contributions too, so in that way, when we start to evaluate whether it makes sense to have contract employees or full-time employees, that financial equation has turned more favorable in some situations to bringing on a full-time employee versus a contract employee, when you consider both the financial side and the exposure and the risk side, with a lot of the changing legal landscape and employment landscape going on. And if you recall this, last year in this current budget, we took a look at our electrician services for our streetlight division program in utilities, and found that it did make sense there to move forward on adjustment in our staffing at that point. So, I just want to bring that up to keep that in mind here. We are looking at that as we're developing this current year operating budget, if there's areas that that makes sense, when we look at particularly areas of financially, what the numbers look like of a contract versus a full-time employee, together with that risk level on the regulatory side with that. So we'll continue to do that, and you might see some proposals come in with this upcoming budget of some staffing adjustments there in that way, and I really see it as a transition, not an add, but as a transition of cost from the contract to full-time.
And a response to new law.
Exactly, that's exactly right, okay.
Just a moment, Mr. Muldoon.
There's something called the Contract Clause, United States Constitution is reflected also in the state constitution of almost every state, including California, essentially says that a legislature specifically cannot go and change a contractual relationship between two parties. It was put there so that some good old boy couldn't call the governor and say, hey, Bill got the lumber contract, would you please pass a law to nullify it? This is going to see a lot of challenges in the court. I actually suspect there's a very high probability it gets defeated, because it's a direct violation of what states cannot do to contracting parties. So I'm just going to respectfully request that any proposal to do so or consideration be delayed for as long as possible. If it is reality, then it's a reality, and I understand that's the world we live in today in California, but I'll be voting against it if I think it's a little premature, and it's for that reason alone.
Okay. The, just to clarify on timing, the suggestion on an increase of an FTE would be coming as part of the next budget cycle, so it'd be June?
Right, the proposed budget comes out in early May.
And we'd be voting in June, though?
And voting in June, that is correct.
We'll see what goes in the next four or five months, all right.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. We're going to be moving over to talk about some additional resource needs in our harbor department.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to chime in here, and out of abundance of caution, I'm not saying all these have conflicts, but, and I don't know how else to reference it other than pages, so pages 14 through 17, I will be recusing myself because of interests on the harbor. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you, members of the council and Mr. Mayor. My name is Kurt Borsting, and I'm with the harbor department, and it's been a pleasure to be the harbor master for the past year, and as all of you are aware, the harbor department is still in its early years of operations, and I'm happy to report that during those early years, we have made significant progress towards the goal of being a real ambassador presence for users of the harbor, and to promote the shared use of this wonderful resource that Newport Beach has available to it. We've made particular inroads with our community of mooring holders, as well as the on-water live-aboard community, people that call the harbor home, and folks that earn their living on the water, and as well as folks that are doing what we all hope happens every day, which is having fun and using it for events, and things like using the public anchorage to raft... fun and using it for events and things like using the public anchorage to raft up together and have community. We're looking for opportunities to continue to provide more services and amenities. This year, we launched a trial vessel cleanup program that we're calling the Ship Shape Program. And the principle there is that vessels on the harbor, we want them clean and well-cared-for and that means that they're going to be safe and less likely to be pollutant concerns. And the reality that in some cases, it's difficult for people to do so while they're storing their property on moorings in the middle of the harbor. And so by letting folks come in for a few hours and use public facilities, that's an example of the type of amenity that we can continue to build on. I'm also proud of our team's work with public resources in the form of state grants to help us remove derelict vessels from the harbor and public auctions where we've been able to find new homes for people to care for property that otherwise was abandoned. Lastly, this last year, our commission has worked very hardly, hard, pardon me, at looking at the harbor rules in the form of Title 17, cover-to-cover review to see how we can better serve the community and our team has participated in supporting those activities. Going out and working with the community so that they get educated and understand those rules through the code education and enforcement process has been one of our roles and responsibilities. And since 2018, mid-year, almost 1,500 cases have been opened and I'm happy to report most of them are resolved responsibly with the, with the parties. In a very few number, it has led to revocation of permits on the harbor. And as previously mentioned, with the removal of derelict vessels, happy to report that 55 such derelict vessels have been removed from the harbor, making it safer. We're also engaging the business community. There are a lot of people that earn their living and create jobs on the harbor and the marine activities permit is an opportunity for the city to work with them and engage so that we again can meet this principle of sharing this resource so that their business activities can thrive, but they're not disruptive to the people who otherwise visit or live along the harbor. And we have built 37 such permitted relationships at this point and are looking to grow that into the future.
Let's pause right there for just a moment, if you wouldn't mind going back. There you go. Thank you, Ms. Dixon, and then Mr. Avery.
Yes, and thank you, Kurt, for, for the, the good report so far. It would be helpful just to have some perspective so on this slide. Can you compare to prior year, just so we know what's been going on over a trend line?
You know, I, I do not have that data available to me because I understand we really began doing the data collection effective July of 18, at least in our iteration of this team. What I can share with you is that there's a wide variety of the type of cases. And so some of these are very easy to resolve with the other person. It might just be an insurance certificate, for example, that has gone overdue, that needs to be produced to the city to show that the vessel in question is properly insured and the city's protected with additionally insured endorsements. To a more complicated case where maybe someone has really let their property fall into disrepair and it's become inoperable, and those are more significant code violations where we would have to work more intensely with the, with the permit to remediate those.
Well, I, I get that. I mean, this is just your, you know, your project list and what you are responsible for. I, I think that's terrific. I just think going forward, I'm sure once you have the data on an ongoing basis, because what, in terms of impounds and vessels removed, all that's important. That's why the harbor department was created, so we could see all this good work that's being done. So as you go, obviously as you go forward and collect data, as you probably would, but it's, it's good to know that you're out there doing your job. Thanks.
Thank you. We'll do that.
All right. Mr. Avery has removed his request for speaking, so we'll go ahead to the next slide.
Thank you. As we look forward with the expectation that some or all of the recommendations coming from the harbor commission will be adopted in terms of changes to Title 17 to better serve the harbor, we really again will want to lead with an aggressive education model so that users of the harbor understand what those rules of the road are, as well as some additional opportunities to confirm compliance with those requirements. And those will be some of our areas of focus. We'll also continue to work very, very hard to meet this goal of being the ambassadors of the harbor and looking for different ways that we can serve the community. We're in the spirit of experimentation right now. We had a, a big storm, for example, in December and we were out there pumping out small craft that belonged to community members. I think we got 45 boats de-wired over the weekend. So if they were the helpful Honda guys, we want to be the helpful harbor folks. So, and that's really part of building our brand. We're looking to find different amenities and services that serve the community of users on the harbor. One example that I think is an exciting one are our ongoing efforts with the U.S. Coast Guard to potentially establish a west anchorage opportunity where folks can literally drop anchor and enjoy community together near other neighborhoods of, of the harbor where shopping and dining and entertainment venues can support that activity. We're also going to build our relationships with additional members of the business community based on the direction we've received from the harbor commission. So those are some of our priorities for the coming year.
Thank you. Just, oh, never mind.
No, is that okay?
Yeah, that first bullet point was what I was going to ask about. All right, Mr. Hurdman.
Just a couple, just a, one question, Kurt. I'm curious about wanting to increase your presence on the water. Can you define that a little bit better for me? Is it, are you looking for new ideas or just increased actual presence on the water?
Well, in terms of amenities, we want to find additional ways our team can serve the community of boaters so that the city is better served. And so as an example I already gave was this cleanup trial program. But we're learning observationally. So occasionally we'll get illegally dumped material, for example, that will come off the harbor, off vessels on boats, and then end up in public trash areas near people's homes. And so we can develop a service where maybe we do a spring clean day, where we encourage members of the boating community to come to city-provided three-yard dumpsters on that weekend, where they can remove that property safely from their, from their vessels, maybe in, in connection with the annual volunteer underwater cleanup activity that takes place on the harbor. And it has a twofold. Not only are their vessels safer and cleaner, but there's less likelihood of folks engaging in illegal dumping that affects other members of the community. Those are the types of amenities and services we're going to continue to experiment with to try to serve the, the, the city better. In terms of presence on the water, we want to continue to serve in these hospitality roles that I'm describing, but we also need to be out there to help people understand the code requirements of the city. And some of that is time of day, where if we're investigating someone who may be living aboard their vessel without permission, without a permit, we need to be there at the wee hours of the morning to observe that and be able to document it so that we can pursue the code violation. And to the same extent, if we want to work with the business community, a lot of the activity happening with the commercial fleet is happening on weekends and evenings. And again, we need to be able to be in that daypart beyond where we are today. And so those are some of the shifts that we're proposing as part of our, our request today.
What's it going to take to do that?
I'm about to show you.
All right. Just a moment. Mr. Avery.
So I may be a little jumping ahead here, but what, what's the budget for this year for the harbor department? A little over 1 million?
I believe it's around 1.2.
And how does that compare with similar-sized harbors in California?
I don't have that data available to me, but I think it's fair to say that we are a modest budget at this point. I'll describe our team as lean and mean, but we're delivering a lot of, of service. And it's, in some cases, it's an unfair comparison because if you were to look at, you know, let's say Port San Luis up, up the coast, they have a lot of in-house services that we're currently using third-party service providers to assist this city. And they're different models, so they're not always apples to apples.
Right. I think Avalon's budget for that small harbor is about 5 million.
I think that's true.
And the harbor master can see that, his domain easily from his office. And there's tremendous amount of cycles, of course, in the summer, so a lot of it's just based on summer. But they give a very good level of service over there. When people arrive on their boats, they drop the dye tablets into every boat to make sure, you know, they're not polluting from their heads or their toilets. And they, that harbor, in my view, is a really well-managed harbor. And one of the reasons is because it's, it's so tight geographically, it's easy to see it. Newport Beach is the opposite. It is a huge harbor, a tremendous amount of waterfront to patrol and deal with. There's a lot going on. Our cycles are even larger. The numbers show, the, the number of visitors to the harbor are much more than Avalon. So to really manage this going forward, I know, and, and I know Mayor O'Neill's already working on this and all the council's aware of this, we're going to have to fund the harbor to a much larger degree. And I know we're ramping up to that, but I think it's important to sort of mention that because you are doing, I, I think your first year has been great and you've, you're working, but you're working, in my view, with not a lot of, of money here to, to do the job. And you've been working within the budget and I commend you for that. And so that's very important, but there's a long road ahead and, and we're going to need to find some funding revenues for that, you know, take another look at things and figure that out. But it's, I just think the public should know that we're on that road. It's the very beginning, but it, it's very important to the ongoing success of the harbor. Our harbor has not been managed in any way that we're describing here for a long time. And to, and it's also one of the major differences between our harbor and most other harbors in California is it's a residential neighborhood as well, with 1,200 homes on the bay. And so that adds a whole nother component. There's so much to it. And I commend you for doing a, a great job and I just want to let you know that I know most of council supports this initiative and we're going to try and work toward getting the harbor department staff to the point where you can do the coverages that are necessary and be able to, to ramp up in the summer when there's so much activity going on. And there's a lot of other, other responsibilities on the harbor that we need to still tackle. And Title 17, it's great that that's finally being brought to a vote here in the near future, which will give you some of the tools to operate, particularly on the code enforcement side. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. When you do come back, I guess in the context of the budget coming forward, it would be helpful to really, for all of us, to understand what, how, how many visitor boats come into the harbor? How many boats are there in the harbor? And just kind of give us an overview of the, the operational status of the harbor and how you're servicing as you start to indicate here on the, I guess I'm jumping ahead, but just looking at these positions you're looking at, wherever it is here, adding people? Or did I see that? Yes, I guess on the title, page 17.
Next page, yep.
Yeah, that, and I'm not saying yea or nay, I, I need some context. How many boats are you servicing? How many boats are out there? How many visitors are coming in there? I know, and also I would like to know if, obviously this will be for a future presentation, for three years now, five years, we've been talking about Marina Park and the visitor-serving aspects and marine services for visitors to marine, boat visitors to Marina Park. I'd like to know how that, the occupancy of those docks. I see, I drive by there all the time and a lot of them are empty, but in the high season, they're full and at Christmas Boat Parade, they're full, but other parts of the year, they're pretty empty. So on a revenue basis, that was supposed to help subsidize the operations of Marina Park. So anyway, I think when you come back with your budget requests, I'd like to know the context for what we're talking about. How, how, what are we doing and what are we not doing? What are the gaps in the services? I know we've heard, and you are aware of this, people have said that they can't get a hold of people on the weekends. I think you've remedied that. That's great. So just operationally, how are we servicing the boat-serving population? Also, I'd like to know when we're talking about this at budget time, do we coordinate it all with the lifeguards? I mean, they have boats and they're trained to be hospitality ambassadors to our community. So I just wonder the opportunities to share any resources with, between the lifeguards as well. So you could come back with that, but that, just serving that for me to know in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Muldoon and then Ms. Brenner.
Thank you. With the recent announcement of the partner ways with the UCI program in ours, how does that affect your resources or does it? Could you please just let us know?
Well, we're going to work closely with the Recreation Department, who serves as basically the landlord for the Marina Park facility as they develop a new service model for that sail bay and the way that we're going to provide experiences for people to learn about how to, how to best use the harbor. And I think they're exploring a more contract-based model where it will bring, bring those services in, in-house. But it does give us a chance to refresh some conversations about serving the public because we have a dining establishment there that is very popular, where dockside use of those resources for diners or visitors to the park, along with using that longer dock that's some 200 feet for larger vessels that occasionally may want to stay there for the night that we can't accommodate within the 40 or 50-foot slips of the guest slips at Marina Park. There may be an opportunity to revisit that. So I think the resource allocation presents an opportunity with this change. And then even space allocation. We inherited sort of a, a space understanding of that area below our office and this may be an opportunity for us to raise our hand and say, we'd like to, you know, maybe be considered for a little additional space allocation so that we can continue to have all the, all the tools that we need to perform our duties. So those are some examples of some of the things we're going to look into with that. And then thank you, Ms. Dixon, for your suggestions. We'll be sure to bring those forward at a future meeting. I will provide one example of context that speaks to Councilman Avery's example. I got, I get the chance to speak to a lot of groups about the harbor. And two things I share with them, if you were a visitor to Newport Harbor coming into the Channel Entry and you were to make your way to West Newport, you will be, you'll be looking forward to a three-mile journey once you enter the harbor. And that represents about 840 acres of waterways that we manage. And so to give you a context, that is about the size of Central Park in Manhattan. And so it is a big place and it's, it really deserves the, the name, a gem of the city and one of the world-class small craft harbors available to, to boaters. And we've done a good job being out there and helping people, but where there is room to grow and a, a room to even provide a higher degree of service. And the direction that we are receiving from the commissioner, the commission rather, is that it will be more of a Catalina model if the council supports it, where we'll be able to have more impact with folks visiting the harbor to make sure that they're being responsible and not potentially polluting through, through things like the dye tab program that we, we can expand.
Very good. Thank you. I love that analogy. I'll be using that about Central Park.
Yeah, it's great.
I think it's probably safer though than Central Park. To follow up on that, the, the question about UCI and who's going to be there, I would love for us to explore an enterprise solution as well. Someone who perhaps is, can find use of the space in a way that's visitor-friendly because it's, not all services are inexpensive, but can provide revenue and maybe even offset our own staff requirements. We can talk about that more offline, but it's such a pristine location that there, there may be the right operator out there who can make more use of the slips and the facilities available.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brenner.
Kurt, I'd like to see in the future some sort of information about how this is all funded, whether it is, whether the fees that are charged to the people who directly use our harbor cover the majority of the costs and how that works in other similar places like Catalina. Does that come out of general fund money? Does that, is that covered primarily by fees from the boating community? Or I think it's something that's really, because obviously we all benefit from this, but some benefit to a greater degree. So I'd really like to see an analysis of that, like currently and projected in the future.
Thank you. We will.
All right. Let's move quickly through the next couple of slides. The, I'll just, real quickly note, it sounds like there are a lot of questions up here about budgets. So when we come back for our study session on budget, which usually expands for a while, it would probably be helpful to have some of the questions answered and when we bring that back, probably in April. All right, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So to address many of the things that have been discussed so far, we do have some proposed modifications to our current model. During the first few years of our operation, the, a code enforcement supervisor was provided on loan to the department and we are proposing that we make that arrangement permanent. To speak to some of the daypart discussions that we earlierly, or that we discussed previously, the idea of adding some part-time code enforcement staff to support that function not only can be a force multiplier for us, but also get us onto more days of the week for service and more times a day for that part of our service. With that, we do think that we could modestly reduce the number of hours assigned to the reduce the number of hours assigned to an existing classification of worker within the same department. Lastly, we're hoping for the support of the council to add a full-time permit technician. I don't want to call it paper pushing, but there's a lot of permit requirements that come to our customers, everything from providing insurance that meets the city's code, but also meets the risk management strategies that the city has in place, to proving that the vessel is in fact theirs and that the mooring equipment is regularly serviced, that it doesn't represent a risk of damage to other parties' property or, or users of the harbor. And so these are things we hope to do in the future as well. And lastly, this is how it pencils out in terms of the FTE assignments. If you were to look at this year, presuming you include the on-loan code enforcement supervisor, we are at almost 11 FTEs. By the modest givebacks of a little bit of time in one department assistant and the field staff, and then adding the permit technician as proposed and the full-time code enforcement person, it would add 1.5 FTE as proposed.
Okay. Any questions? All right. Dan, Dan, would you mind coming back up for just a moment? I want to make sure we got Mr. Beeks' question answered. Given the amount of information, I'm also going to break it up so we can go to public comment on this item. So Kurt, don't go too far, but Dan, why don't you come on up for just a moment? The question was if you could just quickly define the phrase "non-spendable" on that first slide.
Certainly. So, so part of what leads into, or is a part of general fund, fund balance are things like long-term receivables or inventories. So they're not readily spendable for, you can't spend inventories. So it's, it's really the, the lo, most, the vast majority of it is a long-term receivable from the tidelands fund. For all the money that we advanced to the fund to do the dredging, the other component would be inventories.
Okay. Thank you. So in the interest of not having Mr. Duffield jump up and down like, like a jack-in-the-box for the, for conflict issues, I'm going to open up public comment first on the issue of the harbor. If you'd like to come speak, come speak. And if you'd like to speak on the other items, I'll let you speak after that as well. All right, go ahead.
Mayor O'Neil and staff, my name is Dennis Baker. I'm very happy to hear the report from the harbor master and I'm going to start out with some compliments to that, that whole operation. It's been demonstratively over the last couple of years now it's been placed. It's just a really nice presence out on the harbor. So thank you. I echo the thanks that the council has given to the harbor master and his department. There's been also a lot of progress in things like expansion of pad and waste oil disposable for, for the boats, which the city has done, which is also a good preventive measure for preventing harbor pollution in the water. And moving on to, I want to suggest kind of a far-out thing, but it's maybe not so far out because council member Dixon mentioned the lifeguards and the harbor master mentioned expanding services. So I just want to plant the thought. Maybe we ought to think about adding fire. So we've taken over some of the duties in the harbors, the mooring management, the patrol we've been talking about. And so maybe we ought to think about taking over the fire suppression and on the harbor. We have, as Mayor, our council member Dixon also mentioned, the lifeguards, all of our lifeguard, our whole lifeguard department is far, part of the fire department. Not that the lifeguards are trained firefighters, but they are in the same department. We have a fleet of boats and those boats are the same kind of boats that are used currently by the sheriff for fires. So mounting a nozzle in the front could make them fireboats or fire suppression boats. We have a very good land-based fire department. If we had a facility where those trucks, or the engines, not the trucks, but the engines could be put on a, on a, quickly put on a barge, the ferry might be too slow, but they actually could be used to fight from the water side of land-based fires along the coast. So there's, there's a lot of ideas, a lot of options that I think the council should consider about gradually moving that direction. I am not naive. It would cost money. So that's a reality, but on the other hand, I, I'm a firm believer in city control over our city. I think that we should be responsible for taking care of our city. And I think as we move more in that direction, we are accomplishing that. We would have the control, we'd have the responsibility. And if we did a bad job, it's our bad. And if we do a better job, then that's a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers on the harbor presentation? All right, seeing none. On the harbor, okay. Come on up.
Good morning, Council. George Leslie. I think Title 17 was raised, I believe, on the financial and also on the harbor. Can you explain what is Title 17? And is it a federal ordinance, state or city?
I'll bring, I'll, we'll answer that after public comment.
Okay. And then regarding the personnel costs, it seems like as the city manager talked about, we have a couple of things that may offset. We have AB-5, which is going to require the classification of more workers as employees instead of independent contractors. And that sounds like that will increase payroll costs. And will that, the people who are workers who will become classified as employees, will they, will they have pension contributions as well? Or are all employees, will they have pension benefits or not? On the other hand, it is also, city manager mentioned, more employees as time goes on will contribute more to their own pension as opposed to in the past. Do those two things tend to offset or is it too early to, to know that?
All right. Thank you, George.
Thank you.
Any other comments on the harbor item? All right, seeing none. Real briefly to answer George's question on Title 17. So at our next city council meeting, which will be this coming Tuesday, at the regular council meeting, we will be discussing what is called Title 17 revisions. So Title 17 is a reference to a portion, a large portion of our municipal code. And Title 17 deals with our harbor. There, there, this has been going on for, Paul, help me out, two years, two years. And so this is, this has been a project that's been ongoing, significant public comments and discussions. And so I'd say, it's, it's by far the largest portion of our city council packet. And so that's, that's the discussion is modifications to our municipal code dealing with the harbor. All right, Mr. Duffield, if you wouldn't mind coming on, coming back in.
Great.
Thank you very much. All right. So we'll move, and Mr. Leslie, I'll come back to your other comments as well. Do we have any other public comment on the remaining items that we just discussed? All right, coming back. Grace, would you mind speaking to the question about AB-5 and specifically the, the discussion about pensions? And if I were going to suggest a framework, the discussion would probably be full-time employees versus part-time versus contract employees being brought back in on the cost-saving side. And he asked also about when does, when do pensions kick in?
Correct. Yes. So we are finding that because of the reduced formulas with the pepper, with the Pension Reform Act and reduced formulas, that the pension costs are less. So when we are looking at conversions of contract to either part-time or full-time employees, that there would actually be financial savings in that regard, particularly on the salary piece, because we are paying by the hour right now on the contract employees at a, in some cases is a very high rate, you know, if it's specialized service area. And then now when you're looking at the full compensation piece for a full-time employee, which all full-time and part-time employees over 1,000 hours, I want to say, do you have to, are put into our pension plan, into our CalPERS pension plan. But when you look at that full cost of salary with the benefits, it is, we are finding there's, there are several cases where that would be less than having a contract employee. There has been a lot of good work done from the council and from our labor groups to pick up more of that pension cost by the employee, picking up that share. So that's part of what's contributing to that savings there as well.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions up the dais? This is your, okay, Ms. Dixon.
Just a quick question back to page six of the financial presentation. It's not a question, it's just a statement, following up on Councilwoman Brenner's comment about how fortunate we are in our city. The top-line item on property tax, so just for everyone to note that in the significant increases, 4.8% change from where we were in 2018 and the revenues that come in from property taxes, and the property taxes obviously the largest contributor to our general fund, we are indeed fortunate. I don't, I guess I do have a question, how that compares 4.8? Do I recall higher percentage numbers like 6% or 7% in prior years?
Long-term averages, especially coming out of the recession, range between 5% and 7%. And so what we're seeing climbing out, you know, several years of climbing out of the recession, we're seeing that rate of growth starting to slow.
But I do know when we, when community planning and development identifies all the projects, work in progress and how that is contributing to our assessed value. I mean, it's significant. We all know that there's significant construction and new home construction and rebuilding going on in the city. Is that contributing to the increase in revenue? That may be offsetting the slowdown in the recession takeoff? Or that we really are sustaining a high level of revenue impact from property improvement in our city?
Absolutely. So, so when we have a, an assessed valuation base of $60 billion, it takes about $600 million in new valuation to move the needle about 1%. It has been significant. The tricky part of when that comes into play is between the time when it's permitted and it's built, when does the assessor picked up that, that new assessed valuation? And so that's a little, little bit of art more than science. But you're right, it contributes to, to the, to the increase.
Well, just to put all of this in perspective, as Councilmember Brenner said, is that we are indeed fortunate. And when, I call it the circle of life in Newport Beach, that when private property owners improve their properties and it obviously increases our assessed value, and we're going at a rapid clip, as we all know, all over the city, there's rebuilding going on. And then when we make public investments, infrastructure improvements and those investments that we continue to invest in as one-time expenses from the surplus or just ongoing operating expenses, we have a lot to be thankful for. That many cities are, are facing new taxes. I mean, in the last election, I think there were 70 cities in California that had to put tax measures on their ballot. And we know that that will be highly unlikely in the city of Newport Beach in anybody's lifetime. But I just want to let everyone know who's listening and who is here, that we are very fortunate with everyone's private investment in the community and that the city is able to continually make public improvements because that is what funds over 50% of our general fund.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we're going to move to the next item. Let me make sure I got the phrase. It's the update on continuing initiatives. Just as a side note, these are fairly large continuing initiatives. These, this will not be the first time we've discussed them. It certainly won't be a comprehensive review. And we will be further discussing all of these coming down. That's why we want to do just a brief overview for discussion purposes. On the first one that we're going to be discussing, which is our housing element Rena issue, just as a side note to everyone, we spent a little over two hour, around two hours at our last city council meeting during the study session discussing this item. If you'd like to have a bigger discussion, review on this, I would suggest going back and reviewing our study session as well as the discussion we had at the dais during the regular meeting to talk about the formation of a Housing Element Subcommittee. And just as a side note before we get there, the Housing Element Subcommittee application deadline is today. We have had a good number of applications. If you're interested in applying, it is both online as well as we have copies today, physical copies being held right now by our city clerk. If you're in the room and would like to apply after listening just a bit, please do so. The purpose of today's discussion is going to be talking about things that are, that are going to be, that we've taken since our last, actions we've taken since our last council meeting, and then discussions that we'll have on an ongoing basis. And real quick, before I forget, we had some folks asking where they can find the letters that we've sent on SB 50 and then as well on the, to SCAG on the Housing Element on our city website. We probably don't have them on our city website. We probably should for the housing, for the Housing Element discussion, anytime the city, which probably will end up being me, but anytime the city sends a letter on the Housing Element, we should probably add it to our website dealing with Housing Element.
Correct. We've, we've, just last week, we started talking about forming a new housing page, webpage, and then we'll post all those on there.
Yeah, I think that'd be great. Okay. I'll hand it over to you, Simone.
Thank you, Mayor O'Neil. My name is Simone Jurges. I'm your Community Development Director. Want to talk about some of the state mandates that we have going forward, our housing element and Rena numbers. But also I want to add too, that, you know, we, as, as Councilmember Dixon stated, we have a robust construction and development activity. We serve a lot of property owners and businesses. And so we dedicate a lot of resources to just our normal operations with regards to development. We're talking about the Housing Element update. That is, that's our, part of our general plan. That's due on October 15th, 2021. And the city council at the last council meeting initiated the formation of a new Housing Element Update Advisory Committee. That's a committee that's going to help staff, that's provide some policy direction and direction to staff in writing the Housing Element. And as Mayor O'Neil stated, that, that, those applications for that committee is due today. We are out to RFP again for getting a consultant just to help us write these elements. We, our last deadline was on Monday. We got zero applications, zero proposals came to us. So we're going to extend the deadline another, another four weeks. We're pushing it out to February 20th. And we're being very proactive in contacting all the consulting firms. You know, unfortunately, 10 years ago, all the consultants wanted the work. And now 10 years later, we're, because of a robust economy, you know, everybody's kind of picking and choosing what they want to do. So there's a few consultants out there that have committed that they will submit a proposal, but they just want more time because they need to put that proposal together. Just from a budgetary standpoint, I just want to talk about a little bit, what is this going to cost us? Last year in 2019, we had a consultant help us with community outreach because we're doing the general plan update. We spent already $175,000 on that. Going forward, this is just an estimate, hiring a consultant and doing the EIR, we're projecting about $750,000. And it could, you know, possibly even go up to a million, it could even come in less. But I just want to put, put that into the council's ear that it's going to be a significant cost. With any type of Housing Element update, you've still got to continue with outreach to the community. And, you know, we have a consultant already, K&amp;W, has been doing that outreach. And so we estimate we're going to spend another $100,000 on that. The council's already allocated over $1.5 million to the general plan update. So we're not asking for any additional funds to this project because the money's already been set aside. But I just want to kind of share what those numbers are going to look like going forward. This is, this slide talks about our, our action plan, our housing action plan. And again, as Mayor O'Neil mentioned, we, you know, we had a long discussion at the last council meeting. But, you know, we want to firmly challenge some of these state mandates, but at the same time, we have to plan on complying. I had a really good conversation with Senator Morlock's office on Thursday. They're, they're putting in some placeholders for us for any type of legislative changes that we're going to propose. We are currently working on a draft document, on a document for all these legislative changes that we do need. So we're putting that together and we're going to give it, send it over to Senator Morlock's office and Assemblywoman Cady Petrie-Norris' office. We are looking to, we're going to start looking to find a lobbyist to help us with HCD because we need as much support as possible. The council's also asked us to develop a map just to show where can housing actually go in our community. We have a lot of kind of tough properties. We have a flood map. We have environmentally sensitive areas. We have fire zones. We have landslide issues. We have liquefaction issues. You can't put housing just anywhere in the city. And so putting that map together is, is going to be very helpful for, for us to understand where we actually can put housing. And that's going to help us when we submit our housing element and try to get some support from our legislatures. In addition, you know, we need, we need to provide some answers to the community of what, what type of credits we can get for our Rena numbers. You know, how much of the ADU does count? Can livable boards count? So those questions, and there's, everybody has a specific question about this or that. And, you know, we're waiting for HCD to put a, an actual document out, some guidelines out. So we actually, we're going to put out a cheat sheet, an FAQ, to be able to answer all these questions to the community of how we're going to be able to get credit for our Rena numbers. Additionally, we're going to, we've, Mayor O'Neil's already sent a, a letter of opposition on SB 50 and we're going to continue to monitor that, the home rule argument versus charter cities and whether there's any movement from the courts in that. That concludes just my, my brief presentation for the Community Development Department. letter of opposition on SB 50. And we're going to continue to monitor that, the home rule argument versus charter cities, and whether there's any movement from the courts in that. That concludes just my, my brief presentation for the community development department.
Pardon me. Thank you. And I'll just quickly note, because the, the housing subcommittee that we formed at the last city council meeting was, has today as the last deadline, the ad hoc committee for interviewing and process will be myself, Councilmember Brenner, Mayor Protem Avery. And so we're going to try to do that as quickly as we can, given the number of applications. We'll, we're going to try to figure out how to, how to do that. But if possible, we will bring it back at the next, at the first meeting in February. If not possible, it will certainly be by the second meeting in February. Obviously, with not getting a bid for a consultant right away, that, that, that does unfortunately provide us a bit more time than I would, I would like. But that's, that's where we are right now. I guarantee by the second meeting in February, we'll be making, the way the resolution reads, it would, these would be my recommendations, but recommendations to council to come back. So I'd like it by the first meeting in February, but certainly by the second. I, given the number of items on today's, and given the importance of this one, I'd like to just break for just a moment and do the public comment on this. And then I just, as a side note, the rest of them we'll, we'll combine into public comment. But on this one item of RENA, given the importance to the community, I'd like to just invite anyone who'd like to make public comments on this particular item. I see a lot of folks who were very good at public comments at our last council meeting, and I appreciate that. Obviously, you don't need to do it in public. You're always welcome to send notes to us, or give us a call on this item. And most of you have been good about that as well. But anyway, I just want to stop for just a moment, invite you up to do public comments on the housing element discussion that you just heard.
Well, of course, I'll take that bait, Charles Klob, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'd like to ask Simone if he has questioned John about, John Morlock, about his co-authoring SB 50, and how that will affect his ultimate vote on that. For those of you at home, you may not know that our local senator is a co-author of this bill, which is horrendous. And I can't imagine why people aren't outraged by his co-authorship of that. And also, our representative has, Cadi Petri-Norse has signed all of the bills that are confronting us today, and has voted, excuse me, voted for every one of them. And that should be noted. While we're, you know, lauding all the stuff that she's done for us, a great deal of what's in front of us is part of her doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, any other public speakers?
Good morning, members of the council. David Tanner. Previously, we spoke about the multi-pronged approach. I support that approach that the city's going to take. I wanted to give you some thoughts on political solutions that the city might advocate, at least my thoughts. It's clear the state wants new housing. They see a shortage. I think the way to achieve that from a political standpoint is not to force housing, but it's to create jobs, it's to incentivize jobs. And so I have a little handout I'm going to give you that gives you these thoughts. I don't need to read them all right now. But basically, it's jobs, infrastructure, maintaining a jobs-housing balance, fixing jobs-housing balances in cities where they're out of balance, where they have more housing than they do jobs, and creating those jobs that create a lot of employees, not big-box automated distribution facilities, using an example, Moreno Valley. Their RENA number is 14,000-plus units right now. They have the land, but they're already jobs short. So that's why they commute to employment sources in Orange County and LA counties. So the other part of it is, where do you put the housing? We've obviously seen, we don't have a lot of options for where we can put new housing. But what is this going to do to our jobs-housing balance? How is this going to affect our public health and safety? Things like this. And finally, I think the lobbyists should talk about their theory that they're purporting, where they, where they talk about continuous growth. This RENA cycle is not one time. I think this is the fifth or sixth cycle. It's going to come again. When cities have historically been planned in California, there's some kind of a maximum cap that is there. When we build a housing tract, and we ask people to invest, or commercial buildings, businesses, we tell them, this is the general plan for the city. This is what it looks like. We're not telling them that this is a continuous growth city with no cap. That's exactly what the legislature is asking. So I have this little handout. I think it's, gives some prudent steps that the city should be taking, or the state should be taking, and they should rethink their philosophy. And perhaps the lobbyists can do that. And then I guess to follow on the prior speaker's point, politics is kind of a dirty game at times. And those co-authors, you ask where they live, and what's the RENA number that that city has? And is that a coincidence? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tanner. Any other comments on this one?
Mayor O'Neill and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. In this housing process so far, it seems to have come to the public in Newport Beach, and almost seems to the government, as a kind of a surprise or a shock, that the six-county SCAG organization, the Southern California Association of Governments, has so much power to dictate what we can do and bind us to certain objectives. And I would want to note, just as the applications for the new committee are ending today, yesterday, SCAG closed the public comment period on an important document they're preparing called the Connect SoCal 2020 to 2045 Regional Transportation Plan and Sustainable Community Strategy. Closing public comment, I assume, means that they are about to adopt that. And I'm wondering if we are fully on top of what that document is and how it will bind us to things. Does that document address our concerns about the John Wayne Airport, getting people to Ontario instead of there, or to Camp Pendleton, regional transportation solutions? And it's not just tangentially related to the present discussion, because their allocation, of the state allocation to SCAG, of where the housing should go, if you look at the RENA methodology which we're protesting, actually uses the data from this new document that's being prepared. And particularly, you'll see that it uses a population figure from 2016 of 84,877. We seem to have supplied that somewhere. And it's assuming that our current housing stock, as of this year, 2020, consists of 39,952 housing units. Apparently, a number we supplied to somebody. How much we have to add is based on that number. But according to our own housing element, that's a number of houses we had in 2002, 18 years ago. And it's a number, we have told the Department of Finance that we have not 39,952, but we have 44,782 units. Are we paying attention to any of this? Are we trying to correct the numbers? And then, secondly, I have to second Mr. Tanner's comments. We're protesting how SCAG is distributing these. We need to be protesting the concept that the state is imposing on SCAG of this concept of continuous growth. We think that Newport Beach is really hard-hit. Garden Grove, Buena Park, Westminster are expected in the next eight years to increase their housing stock like 37% or 44%, 12% here. You can't every eight years add 44% to the number of houses in a city. Anybody who knows about compound interest, I mean, those cities are going to be two miles high to accommodate that in 50 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? All right, bringing back. Let's make sure we get Mr. Tanner's handout, especially for appellate purposes. The, to Mr. Mosher's point about the SCAG regional, we should probably, we should make sure that we've corrected the numbers to the extent that we need to do so. And then to Mr. Klob's point, yep, bipartisan frustration, no question about that one. We've, to the, to the point about SB 50, Senator Morlock is still the co, is still a co-author.
That's correct.
Yeah. The city of Newport Beach last week sent in a letter directly to the author, which is Senator Weiner in, in the San Francisco area, opposing. We opposed for a whole bunch of reasons. The two primary purposes, one was that it still hadn't addressed the concerns we had sent previously, including concerns about the, the point of conflict between those goals and other goals related to environmental concerns. The second purpose was that while we are undergoing a, an attempt to comply with a housing element, changing the rules of the game while we're doing so, will certainly be difficult. All right, Ms. Dixon.
Just to put a visual metaphor to what Senator Weiner's bill, prior bill, or just his intentions, these are public comments he's made. If you have ever been to Hong Kong, that's what he thinks will solve, cities will solve their housing crisis by not building out, it's building up. And he comes, he represents San Francisco, so an urban environment with 50-story buildings is in his frame of reference. That, he has stated this publicly, he hasn't used the Hong Kong analogy, but in terms of building up skyscrapers for housing is his goal.
Okay, Ms. Brenner.
I'd just like to know from Simone, on this southern, this SCAG Connect SoCal plan, are we monitoring that, or do we have access to that? I didn't know about it.
No, we absolutely do have staff committed to that. We are monitoring it. We, there is a lot of cleanup that needs to be done. We've half cleaned up a lot of these documents. So we do have staff committed to this. We are monitoring closely. It's interesting, you know, there's a left-hand, right-hand in SCAG. You know, the right-hand is pushing all this housing down to the coastal cities, but they're not looking at the transportation demands and needs. And believe it or not, we're going to use that to our advantage when we appeal this.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right, let's move on to a discussion about homelessness.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Council. This is Carol Jacobs, your Assistant City Manager. Wanted to give you a brief update on the things that we've been doing in the last year, year, year or so with our homeless population. We have our committed homeless liaison officer and homeless coordinator, that is Natalie from our library. In this next budget year, we would like to continue to use her as a resource in the manager's office. She has done a great job. She is learning a lot. She's drinking, she's drinking from a fire hose, and she's, she's drinking it well. Also like to thank the library for, and Tim Heatherton and his staff for their gracious allow, graciousness in, in accepting us taking Natalie, not just for one year, but for two. I'm, I'm kind of known for doing that. So people are a little bit afraid of me. The, so that's, that's one thing. And she is really focused directly on it. She goes out to sites when, when residents complain. She makes sure that our residents' needs are being addressed. If they see something, we go out and take a look. We've created a rapid response team internally for those resident concerns, and we can jump on these things pretty quickly. We've had some successes recently up at Sunset Ridge Park. And we've had some success in working with the county to clear the homeless encampment that was underneath the, the bridge over the San Ana River at PCH. So we think, we think we're doing relatively well at this point. We're down to about 43, we think, active homeless people in town. We've created a, a by-name list of folks that we've interacted with over the next, over the last couple of years. And if, we've seen them in the last 90 days, we're kind of considering them active. And so we're down to about 43. 13 of those have been through the county system, and so they are eligible for housing vouchers. And obviously, that's the end game for us, to get those folks housing vouchers. The real, the real crux of that is, there aren't enough housing vouchers for the need. And that's at the county level. One of the things we'll want to talk about, and I'll let the city manager do this a little bit further, is exploring some permanent supportive housing opportunities and partnerships that maybe we may want to engage in, to really get these folks off the street in a permanent, in a permanent way.
Just a real quick, couple of quick notes. First one is on the panhandling signs I've received. We had, I'd sent out requests from people saying, asking them to tell us where to put more of them. Two locations that I've heard, one is San Miguel and San Joaquin. And then the other that I've heard is the, is inside of Fashion Island. As your, boy, I'm forgetting what the street would be. Yeah, I guess, is it, it's, yeah, it's San Miguel. You're right. Thank you. So it's San Miguel and Newport Center. So, right in that area. And then one other quick note, I had mentioned that we spent a lot of time talking about RENA at our last city council meeting. We also had a homelessness update in that same packet. And on our city website, there is a hour-long presentation by Natalie to speak up Newport that occurred about an hour, or I'm sorry, a week or two ago. Strongly encourage everyone to, to watch that as well. It's a, it's a more robust discussion of what we're hearing this morning. All right, let's go to the next slide.
So for the next year, we would like to continue with our homeless coordinator. We'd like to continue with our outreach service provider, which is CityNet. We believe that they are, they are doing a, a good job in reaching our homelessness. Again, this is a very complex, time-consuming process. They know, they know our folks, and they are trying to get them into the system. Natalie works with them almost on a daily basis to make sure that they are, they are doing what, what we've contracted them to do. This next proposal is to provide some additional resources for our rapid response team. And what this looks like is housing vouchers. If we can get somebody with a housing voucher, there are ways that we can get them housed quicker. If we can survive, provide some support with the Orange, we've been talking to the Orange County United Way. And they have a program where if we could donate $15,000 to $17,000 a person, we can get that person housed with the basic necessities. So they get an apartment, and they get the, and we would supply the basic necessities, and then the voucher would continue to pay for the rent. But it's that gap, it's that stopgap of, you know, they don't, they need a bed, they need furniture, they need cooking utensils and those kinds of things. So that's an idea that we have, that as people get vouchers, we can then offer them that rental assistance as a one-time payment per person that would get them housed. There, there is no other way. I just got a note from the Orange County United Way the other day. There is no way for us to get somebody housed unless they have a voucher. Unless we wanted to start our own housing assistance rental program and provide our own vouchers. The city of Garden Grove does that. That's not something we've explored at all. But that's, that's another path the council could consider at some point if they, if they wanted to. We also would like additional funding for transportation costs. If somebody, if we can reunite a family member with somebody, with them somewhere across the country or somewhere else, we could get them there. There's a motel stay. If we're, if we've got somebody close to getting a house or an apartment, there's that stopgap where we put them in a motel for a very, very brief period of time. And then the other thing that these folks need is some job training. How can we get them trained so that they can become self-sufficient again? And so those are some of the things that we would, that we would use with that $200,000, if that's something the council would like to do. And then the other thing that the ad hoc committee has been talking about is possibly doing some kind of permanent supportive housing project. And I'm assuming you all know what that is, so I don't need to explain it. But it would be putting out an RFP for a developer to create a permanent supportive housing apartment complex of some kind with a number of units in there, between, you know, 15 and 20, it could be more. And that, that would provide the, the needed wraparound services, very much like the Cove here in PCH, that would be an expanded one, so that we would have someplace for these folks to go in town, and they could stay where they, where they, this is home for them. And so that's another option that we'd like the council to consider. And I'll let kind of Grace take it from there.
We'll take just a moment. Ms. Dixon.
I just wanted to, well, first of all, this rapid response team is fantastic. I mean, we've been dealing with the number 60 for five years, 60, 62, 64. So we are now doing a quantifiable inventory of how many homeless are on our street. And it's now 42, 3, 3? That's fantastic. So just to clarify that, so we do, we have contact with the 43 homeless people that are, have been identified. And so I know it's a multiple encounter process, some requiring up to 25 physical encounters. That's fantastic. Just to understand, or just put this in context. Just to understand, or just put this in context, you know, a few months ago, we were talking about whether it's on our city yard or the airport area that we were going to be spending to, to create a temporary shelter. We were going, we were anticipating costs could be a million dollars once that's finished. So I don't think, we're, doesn't sound like we're still pursuing that option. So we're looking at these costs, that we're looking at how to put homeless people, help them get into some form of housing with the voucher and then establish this on a case-by-case basis. Is that, I don't know, I'm not asking necessarily, are we finished looking at those outside, those temporary shelter sites? But it sounds like this is a, a successful path that we're pursuing right now and at less, at less cost. Am I characterizing that correctly?
So I'm just going to, let me respond, let me, let me answer on the shelter side, but on the cost side and the, and the response and the additional side, I think it's, would you mind handling that portion? But let me, let me talk to the shelter issue. Is that okay? Okay. Yeah, so the, we've been talking for a while at the, at the homeless task force meetings as well as the city council meetings about trying to go essentially three approaches right now. One was the temporary shelter at the corporate yard, one was temporary shelter at Avis, and then the other issue, and then trying to work with at least one neighboring city. And so as we were going through the process, particularly at the corporate yard, we sent out, we, we were going through plans, we had an architect. And in order to make the plans work properly, it made no sense to go all the way through the plans without first talking about, without first getting an operator who would be able to talk to us directly about that. The goal was to plan for at least 40 beds, although as you hear, you know, we have 43 people, it's, it's unlikely we'd need 40 beds, but we needed to plan for up to 40 beds. And so when we sent out the RFP for an operator, our staff spent time within, in informational meetings with, with operators around the county. There are not a significant number of them, but there are enough of them that they took interest and came in and spoke. When the bid period closed and we had no bids, part of the question was why? And the answer we got back was it's too small. And so the problem that that puts us in, as you can imagine, is that without an operator, you really can't have a shelter. And so the, it's not a question of location at the, at this point. We can talk location anywhere in the city. If we don't have an operator because the beds are too small, then we don't have an operator. And so that puts us in a, in a, in a, in a problem. It's a problem. And part of the reason, and by the way, just a side note, on the RFP, it was not, we didn't, we didn't send it out saying we're only going to be spending X amount of money. The money wasn't the issue. It was just, it was too small for, for them, for the operators to justify coming in. So when we are looking at the issue of Boise versus, Martin versus Boise and the United States Supreme Court not taking that up, there has been, there has been understandable frustration out in the community on not having a shelter open for that, for the purposes of enforcing anti-camping ordinance. And I can understand the frustration certainly because it's felt up here as well to see people sleeping on the sidewalks still in our city. And so we, we are trying to find, do everything we can find within the legal, legal understanding on this issue. And so as we continue to move forward, certainly what we're seeing though is we're trying really hard to find as many carrots as we can. And so on this side, when we're talking about the resources for the homeless strategies, we certainly have not given up at all on the regional approach. We're certainly not giving up on discussions which are ongoing with neighboring cities for, for this approach. Because there is nothing compassionate about leaving people on the streets, there just isn't. And so we're doing everything we can to, to accomplish that goal. So that's, that's a further explanation of the news story that was, was out there on the issue. It's, as you can imagine, incredibly complicated, but, and look, if you're, coastal cities tend to see an influx as the summer months come. So we're, you know, we're prepared for that. You can see that's part of the discussion is we're preparing for how to have these rapid responses to individuals to get them up and off the streets. And this is, is not, although this is, there is, there is much to be applauded, there's much work to be done, and we recognize that. Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you. The mayor and I are in a little bit, normally we're very aligned, a little bit not aligned on this issue, but of course, it's nothing personal. Well, I interpret the Boise decision to be very vague and frustrating. I'm sure my colleagues do. It is vague as to whether or not the facility offered an alternative for going to jail must be within the city limits. In my opinion, the safest thing to do is to have it within the city limits. That way, we can aggressively enforce our own anti-camping laws. And I won't have to see someone this morning like I did lying out in the cold with a blanket over them right by a high school. I know you share the frustration we share. And quite frankly, I want a zero tolerance policy for homelessness in the streets of Newport Beach because we have the capability to provide them a bed. For the RFP question, apparently some of the operators do not want to go through the trouble of responding to an RFP. And many of them, in fact, were not interested in one that small. But I've been told by those in the industry that there are operators who are willing to work with us if we do our own shelter at the corporate yard, which again, I am motivated by doing simply because it allows us to actually enforce the laws on the book as aggressively as we can. And I, I believe that at the end of the day, whether we work with a neighboring city, which I, I think is risky because of the Boise decision and because some of the operators or some of the cities are not as fiscally prudent as we are, we have to get a solution sooner rather than later. So I do not believe, I'd not want our own local shelter to be off the, off the table. I think that's actually the best, safest solution for the sake of the Boise case. Enables our police to be as aggressive as they can. And if we work with a neighboring city, so be it. But I don't think any decisions have been made, and no formal direction's been given to staff that our own facility is off the table. Thank you.
Yep. We're, we're aligned actually on that. I, that's why I wanted to clarify the comments made from Councilmember Dixon, they're not off the table. And I didn't, I don't mean to say that they are. I'm, I'm giving the statement about what has, what, in terms of not getting a bid. So that was, that was what I said. I don't, I don't, I don't think we disagree.
I think we're, may I just make a comment? I wasn't suggesting that we're, I, I'm glad we had this clarification. That's precisely the appropriate time today is to just update the community on where we are, but not taking away from the work that's going on an ongoing basis until we have reached the decision of what we are going to do.
I agree with that statement. Yep. That's, that's fair. Councilmember, Mayor Proton Avery, and then Councilmember Brenner.
So it's been, this has been a journey, and it seems like it's gone on, you know, much longer, at least for me. The intensity when this whole thing came up to us and the community was really something. And there was a lot of pressure on council, in my view, to, to act quickly. And I think we've done a good job of looking at this in a very clear-eyed way, keeping the humanity always in front, but at the same time, not making mistakes in just sort of being reactive. And we've seen there's multiple cases of cities that have bought properties, done things, gone sort of down the wrong paths. And so we had to balance, in my view, our actions with trying to come up with solutions that are going to work the first time and that our expenditures, which are going to be considerable of the public's money, is, are going to work the first time. So my perspective on this is we are on the right track. Staff has done a great job in the last six months in particular in, in getting people housed. And we're continuing to work in almost sort of a guerrilla way, if you will, of, of multiple, multiple efforts being made on one person. It's just an incredible amount of effort and time. But we've, we've put together a small little coalition, which I feel from a cost standpoint has been very effective in getting folks housed. And I think it's going to get better because we're going to add more components to it. But I think the council's, I won't say reticence, but our deliberativeness has taken some time, but it should not be mistaken for absolute conviction about solving this problem the right way for the folks that are on the streets, but also for our residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brenner.
I'd just like to echo what Brad, Brad said. Some of our surrounding cities who had lawsuits that were causing them to be very proactive on this issue took avenues that they are now being forced to go back and take a different avenue. So it looked, and, and because we didn't have a lawsuit, we were not perhaps as proactive about this. We were able to be much more deliberate. And what may have looked like inactivity on our part was actually us just being very strategic about what we were doing. I'd like to mention on Kevin's point about if his analysis is right, that we have to do it in our city, then that's one point. But the money that's coming from the state is for regional solutions. So we're sort of between a rock and a hard place on that issue where if we're able to access state funds for this, they really, even cities around us that were not so favorable toward a regional solution are now being forced to look at that because there's so much money from the state involved. So it's not a, it's not an easy solution one way or the other. But I just wanted to also mention on the rapid response team resources, the $200,000 and the housing assistance, when we finally find someplace for someone to live, I have been contacted by so many people and this whole time have been talking about, we have access to so many contributions and generous people in our community that want to help in this regard, but we don't run a nonprofit. So it's a really difficult issue to resolve. But I'd like for us to have some sort of report in the future about how we can access the generosity of our citizens in helping for this to help offset the costs that we are going to be incurring in order to do this.
Thank you. We, we're probably going to try to do at least bi-monthly updates in city council meetings to Councilmember Brenner's point. That should probably be at the end of the next, the second meeting in February. Let's try to, let's try to have something in there on that issue. Mr. Hurdman.
Will, what was the point in time count when you participated in that?
I think it was 64.
64? And now we're down to 43?
Yeah, and that, that actually is comparing apples to apples, just to keep in mind, because the point in time count occurs in February, I believe, January.
That was in February?
It was January, yeah.
Okay. So it's been a year?
It's been a year.
A year. And in a year, our staff has been successful in getting a riff over 21 individuals' heads. Is that correct, Carol?
I would say that those, some of them have been housed, some of them have moved to different locations. It's a combination of things.
And not only housing them, but providing wraparound services and...
Correct.
That's, that's significant. You guys really deserve a commendation for that. Natalie, our staff, Tony, you, everyone in the city, we're certainly moving in the right direction. So I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you.
Especially to the community.
All right, last comment, Ms. Dixon.
Yes, just to follow up on Councilmember Brenner's comment, I believe to respond to the generosity of our citizens, our residents, that United Way has a special restricted fund for this. So there is a nonprofit, and these funds go directly for the housing supply purposes. So we may want, we may need to communicate more information about that because it is a 501(c)(3) specifically with restricted funds for that. Thanks.
Sorry, Will, just one last thing.
Go ahead.
I know I mentioned to you around the holiday time about Salvation Army, Salvation Army's role that they played in the city of Anaheim in terms of participating in the funding of the city of Anaheim Shelter. And I, I don't know if our committee has looked into that at all, but I would encourage you just to look into it as a possible resource. Thank you.
Yep, I, we did follow up on that.
You did, okay.
Yep. All right. Let's go through the, the next slide is, yep, so let's move quickly through this and then a discussion on the permanent supportive housing.
This is just the, the activity that our CityNet, our outreach provider has done since we've been in contract with them from March through December. And so we do believe that we are getting some services to our, to our homeless population.
Okay. And then Ms. Leung.
Yeah, so just want to bring up, we do know that the ultimate, the long-term solution is the permanent supportive housing, actually getting the homeless folks housed. And the general thought is, goal is to have housing, affordable housing with wraparound services on, on that site. So certainly with the task force, and now the committee has been working towards this. And we do have a successful permanent supportive housing model with, with the Cove that was mentioned earlier, which is 12-unit apartment complex developed, developed by a private developer specialized in this area. That was converted for veterans, veterans who need housing. So that is the thought right now. We'd like to bring a request for qualifications to work with a developer together, perhaps having a developer take a look at a new site or a site within the city that could be a good candidate for permanent supportive housing. A thought is that it could also be focused, just as the Cove is for veterans, perhaps it's for seniors. We, we do note that in looking at the 43, about half of them are seniors. So that would, would certainly serve a need for our city. I think where we can really be a good partner in this is to have the, the capital contribution piece. We did with the Cove, there were housing, affordable housing funds of about almost $2 million that were utilized. We have about 1.4 million currently in that fund remaining. We also have a development agreement with, with HOG that's supposed to go towards shelter homeless services. So there's some avenues, excuse me, that we think we could take a look at. So you'll have more conversation on this because we'd like to bring this in February to, to release out a request for qualifications to move forward on a project like this.
Okay. Thank you very much. Let's go to the next, next topic. An equally large one, John Wayne.
Good morning, Mayor, members of the council. I will try to keep this very high level so we can quickly move through these, but of course, we'll fill in any details as the council desires. Taking a quick look back at 2019, we have continued our effort toward identifying the quietest, least plodding departure possible out of John Wayne Airport. This was an effort that we've started with Airport Works, excuse me, the Airport Working Group began and we have been a partner in, along with some of our key technical consultants. We added a, a member to that team this year, a consultant with air carrier pilot experience. And he's been, played a key role in that as well. So we're, that's moving forward, and we're very happy so far with the results and the voluntary participation of the five major carriers that operate out of John Wayne Airport. There was a theme this year of our airport efforts, I believe it was developing relationships, and we witnessed a very high level of community involvement. In terms of relationships, we did a lot of work back in Washington DC, thanks to Councilmembers Muldoon, Hurdman, and Dixon. And we, those efforts continue, of course, but we also took a couple of trips back to DC to start really better establishing relationships in the Capitol and also at the county level. We've spent a lot of time improving our relationships with the Board of Supervisors. One of the most time-intensive efforts we had this year was tracking and involving our community in the, the general aviation improvement program that John Wayne Airport is undertaking. We strongly advocated for general aviation protections and community protections in that process. Again, we saw our community come out in full support of that, and I think their role was pivotal in seeing the protections that are in place today and the plan that the Board of Supervisors adopted. One of the things we know for sure is that the, a way to really see some improvement in quieter, quieter departures is the implementation of new technology. We're seeing that with the Delta A220s at John Wayne Airport. Noticeable improvement, much lower decibel level, about 5 dBs lower than older aircraft. So we are looking at ways to incentivize, incentivize air carriers to turn those fleets over faster. We also, a big thing that the council did this year was to restructure the Aviation Committee. We now have a committee that does hands-on work. We're able to better leverage the expertise in our community toward our aviation efforts. Looking toward 2020, we want to continue the work with the air carriers on finding the least impactful departure procedure. We have our, a key subcommittee, our, of our aviation committee now formed. In fact, two members are here today, Ellen Gunther and Jack Strandberg are in the audience. They're looking at other ways to get even quieter departures out of the airport. We want to really fine-tune some possible incentive programs and take those back to Washington and to the state level. Washington and to the state level to see how we might work better with the air carriers to get those fleets turned over more quickly. Continuing to track the implementation of the 2018 FAA Reauthorization Act that has been moving very slowly, and we're working with our lobbyists to make our voice heard in Washington, along with other cities across the country, to make sure that bill, the community-friendly protections within the bill are implemented. And of course, the John Wayne Airport General Aviation Improvement Program continues to move forward, so we're working really closely on that to make sure that Newport Beach's voice is heard in that process. We're estimating about 330,000 to 350,000 in technical consultant costs moving forward. This does not include legal costs. This is simply our day-to-day operational technical consultants. We feel we have a really strong team, a well-respected team in place, and we'd like to continue with the council's approval, of course, of moving forward with these consultants. And that concludes the presentation.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the DIAS? All right. Okay, all right. We'll go to the next item. No, we'll do public comment on the, on the, these three items. All right, Mr. Webb.
Thank you, Mayor. Dave Webb, your Public Works Director. Good morning, council. Real quick, we wanted to brief you a little bit on one of our pending and important programs. And today, we're going to talk a little bit about solid refuge and collection. To start with, and we've had some discussions with the council on various council sessions, there's been a lot of past changes in law and even recent law that has been affecting this program and it's adding to more regulations, more cost. So we've been trying to get ahead of that. And to that note, to the folks, council has actually a subcommittee on this one where the mayor and two councilmembers, Dixon and Brenner, sit, and they've been getting ahead of this and trying to catch up and be ahead of this law before we have any kind of regulatory impact. So I'm going to talk a little bit today about what we've been doing. Some recent adjustments we've been making to our solid waste program is basically in accordance with AB 341 and 1824, which has to do with organic recycling. We've been trying to get ahead of our commercial franchises. We've implemented new hauler franchises. And in that is reporting requirements and notification requirements are now going out. We've adjusted our municipal code recently to include that into the municipal code so we can enforce it. And then again, we have new hauler franchises. We just recently had that discussion. We have got current hauler franchise, they've extended, extended the date, they can have that till 2024. And the new hauler franchise, which has a little more ability for us to help the haulers enforce the state requirements, now is good through 2026, and we're in the process of transitioning those folks over or keep them on the current franchise should they choose. We've also updated, the city has seven of its own commercial franchise, I'm sorry, hauler agreements, and we've had four of those we've recently gone through and updated, some consolidation in there. And then a big one we're working currently on is we're a partner in the Balboa Village. This is just one-off that we have. The Balboa Village has a joint refuge collection system where we have commercial and residential folks all together, along with the city, collecting the refuge out of that area due to space confinement and the way it's laid out. And then we just kicked off an assessment of our facility, we'd like to get done this year. We're looking at our own ways, giving it a detailed analysis so we can identify how best to treat that in compliance with state law. So program adjustments that we still are required to do in the next couple of years to accommodate state law, there is some things we need to do. We need to adjust our program to make sure we maintain our minimum 50% diversion level in accordance with AB 339. That's the one most people know that's gone back for decades where we started recycling and sorting. A big change in that that just happened this year, January 1, is the green waste from an alternative daily cover is no longer considered towards our diversion, and it's now considered landfill. What am I talking about that? When you take in terms of a landfill, basically, when the refuge is put in there, they have to cover it every night, and they used to cover it with dirt. That took up a lot of space in the landfill. Then they found out if they separate all the green waste and then put that on at night, not only do they get, that's an alternative use of that and we get credit for it, but it also covers it, gets rid of the smell and the rodents and other problems. So, but the state just changed that law that we no longer can get credit for that as diversion. So now all that's considered waste, and we have to address how we're going to do that. And we're worried about our 50% diversion rate. Right now, we're thinking it's going to affect our, and again here, this slide has an error and it says 40% overall diversion. I think that's our 40% residential diversion, which drops below our 50%, but our overall diversion, I think, will be close. We're looking at that now, are we going to maintain over 50%? That's important. We're also looking at what we can do with that green waste and how to address it. Can we compost it, digest it? We can even take some of it to waste of energy to get credit for that, to recapture that. We're looking also at those new commercial franchises, can we get more recapture out of that right now? So those are things we're doing. We're also need to review our city's recycling fee, and the working group will be looking at that shortly. We have a fee that we put in place for recycling and hasn't been really reviewed in depth in quite a long time, but with all these changes, we need to take that into account.
You know, Mr. Webb, just a quick note, one of the things I was thinking about over the last couple of weeks when I was dealing, when I was, I was thinking about this issue on my free time, which, yep, anyway, I was. Anyway, so our, one of the things that every, you know, most HOAs have is a, they have gardeners, and they tend to be very large companies, not, you know, not one-offs because they need to be doing fairly large amounts. I know up in Newport Coast, for example, there's some pretty big companies that haul away a lot of green waste. My understanding is all that's going right now to the dump, and so we're getting no credit for any of that diversion. I know that you're prob, I'm guessing, yep, there you go. So I'm guessing we were going to be talking about the residential green waste issues and the cart system and whatnot, but it may be that we ought to be fast-tracking a discussion on changing our code for our commercial green waste haulers, which I suspect would cover most of the companies I just laid out, requiring them to be diverting it somewhere that would actually count toward our, our state mandated recycling credits. So that would probably increase our diversion rate substantially fairly quickly if we were to do that. So we should probably, I would suggest we kick that off sooner than later. I know we're, I know we're working through the residential, but that's, that's low-hanging fruit.
And we'll put that on our next working group meeting. That's a good point. Thank you.
Okay.
So then upcoming program modifications, we're believing wrapped in, or take as the mayor just referred to, we have two residential refuge franchises. And if you recall, the city had an original one for the whole city, and then when he annexed Newport Coast, we got another one. So we have two right now. They're both held by CRNR, but they have different terminology in it and different expiration dates. Our city one expires in 2021, our Newport Coast expires in 2022, and how they handle green waste is done differently. So the group's going to have to work on how we negotiate maybe a new franchise or how we make a modification or amendment to the existing one. One of the thoughts is currently, as the mayor just referenced, we collect our green waste right now, and it's put in the two-cart system we have, it's put in with the waste cart. That would be any kind of trash that's going to the landfill and sorted it, we call a material recovery facility. It's a big processing plant where they take out the recyclables and what they can, the green waste. This was okay when we use this for alternative daily cover because all that green waste would be taken out and they'd put it on a separate side and cover the landfill at night. However, now, it's not going to work because the green waste going through this current system with the co-mingling of the bad waste puts a lot of things, the contamination in the green waste, like glass, metal, and other stuff that we can't use and can't compost. So we need to find a way to get around that so that green waste can be recycled now and composted. Some of the thoughts we're thinking about is maybe we need to look at the processing of it, maybe we look at the contractor's processing, can they run it through slower? More hands, better screening, we can get a cleaner element, and maybe that can be composted. The other thing we're looking at right now is changing our cart system, and we need to explore this. As I said, we have a two-cart system now, and currently that cart system looks like this. You have a black cart, which has all your mixed waste in it, including your grass trimmings and everything. And then you have a cart with co-mingled recyclables, which is basically your cardboard and papers and dry and paper bottles. We're looking at maybe trying to maybe move a better process, might be to move to a mixed recyclable waste cart. And I call this the wet/dry because if, I can put in rock and dirt and things in with, say, cardboard, and it doesn't contaminate it, so I can't recycle it. And then move all the green waste, the organics, and also another item coming is food, into another cart, which then could be separately handled. So we're looking at this process. There is one other process that's possibly available. We, we're not sure about this because of space confines in Newport Beach. A lot of our lots are very small and confined in space. There's the three-cart model, which a lot of cities have, where you have basically organics in one, recycles in another, and the landfill waste in another. So that's kind of coming forward, and that ends the discussion of this.
All right. We've got a couple of speakers. I just wanted to touch real quickly on a, on a quick point. If you add a three-cart system, you add additional trucks on the road. So this is something that the subcommittee is working really hard on. No matter, no matter what, we need to move toward an organic waste diversion program, which will require a green cart. There's no question, we need an organics cart. So the question right now is, does the entire, do we try to work toward a system where the entire city is covered by two carts or three carts? Or is there a hybrid where some parts of our city are covered by three carts, some are covered by two? The two side, just as a side note, you mentioned space confinements. I mean, it's going to be almost impossible to do the, to do a three-cart system on Balboa Island or on the peninsula. So those areas will almost assuredly require us to stay at a two-cart system. In order to get the recycling diversion percentages right, that would probably require us to go to a three-cart system in some, some areas of the city. I would suggest larger areas with large, you know, bigger streets such as Newport Coast, Spiglaz Hill, areas in the, some of the Newport Center areas and things like that. So there's a lot to be done here. These new requirements, the state diversion requirements, they're complicated, they're difficult. A lot of cities are trying to figure out how to handle them. Most cities in South County, for example, I mean, they're, they're just bigger. They've got wider streets, they're just planned differently. They don't have islands. So I'm just saying. Anyway, but the, but that's, there are, there are going to be some space limitations. So when we move forward trying to figure this out and try to work with CRNR, whoever ends up being the contractor on the residential side, just understand that because of the codes, we'll also be needing to adopt an ordinance directing our, our residents to engage in this organic waste diversion program as well. So there will be plenty of discussion, plenty of public comments on this, plenty of policy discussion as well. But just want you to understand, this is going to be actually, this is fairly complicated. And I don't say that lightly, but that's, that's what we're trying to figure out is how to keep the minimum number of trucks on the road in this, in this city. Anyway, Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dave, this may be out of your wheelhouse, but actually, Councilmember Hurdman and I were discussing this last time it came up. What is better for the environment, putting items that perish down the disposal or putting them in the trash?
So, a good question, and a lot of the has, the new assembly laws have to do with greenhouse gases. And we've had that discussion, is it better to put the waste back in a landfill when it generates gas and energy? Or do we compost it, which generates gas, maybe more gas just by transporting it around? I don't know if I have a good answer on that, but that's part of the whole discussion. And then if you make disposal, there's even like going in the landfill and maybe going to like the sewer treatment plant and using that facility to process it? We haven't looked down that road. The industry's looking at the best way to handle these green wastes. Obviously, the, the outcome is to do the least amount of greenhouse gas.
I think that our residents, a lot may, may like to know the answer. I personally would, but because I think a lot of them would be open to either. I was raised that you put it down the disposal, but my dad was a smoker, right? So what did, what did we know? So if you could educate us, I think we'd appreciate it.
And again, I apologize, if you're looking at the question about going down the garbage disposal, we've had that discussion. That still has to be treated, and it ends up in our wastewater treatment plan. The, the problem with that is then you end up with a lot of heavy material in the sewer system itself, and then our utilities crews now have to flush and clean more. So I, there, there's a use for disposal, but I'm not sure that the leading folks would say push everything down it. There's probably a combination of both.
Okay. Mr. Avery.
This is just quite a subject, and I'm always impressed on my street on trash day, how many cans are out there and they're overflowing. You know, the lids aren't closed. And I'm guilty as any of my neighbors, the amount of trash and things we generate. And my wife brought home a book a couple of weeks ago called The Zero Waste Home, and it shows in detail how you can reduce your waste that goes out of your home by like 100 times. It's incredible. And of course, it takes some effort, but it's, I think this is the future for all of us, is just becoming educated and taking some steps to reduce our waste by following, well, this book kind of lines it all out, I won't go into it now. But obviously, it's not a near-term solution, although it's, I think it's like a lot of things, we, our society is changing in many ways much faster than we thought. And I think this is one of those things that's going to have to happen because our landfills will fill up and it's, there's a whole environmental issue. The idea of adding another can and having more trucks driving around, even though they're hopefully all fueled by natural gas, it's, it's really something. So seems to me, this is a personal thing that we need to work toward, reducing our waste coming out of our homes, which is pretty easy to do if you really put a little time and thought into it. Thank you.
Ms. Dixon, then, Ms. Brenner.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to follow up on that, because I was going to say that the same thing, I've frequently mentioned publicly, because my daughter lives in New York City, the overwhelming requirements of how you handle trash as a resident of New York City. You must have four different containers, food goes in one, it's a brown container, paper has to be wrapped up, you have to separate, paper has to be wrapped up separately and put in a recyclable bag, and cardboard goes in another bag, and then all other waste goes in another receptacle. And this is why when you go to New York, you see multiple bags of trash on the street. It's because it's separated. And if you don't, they don't pick, if it's not separated correctly, they will not pick it up, and then you get fined, and there's a trash police that goes around and gives you fines. So I hope we can educate ourselves so we don't have to resort to those kinds of punitive measures, but I, I think that the time is coming, and this is why we've been educating the community on the commercial side of this and saying that the state is mandate, is another state mandate, but it's probably for our, our better good ultimately for future generations. But this is happening, and it's going to cost the city, it may cost our residents to, because we are passing along higher costs that our haulers are passing on to us and how they're treating all this waste, that that gets passed to the city. So we have a lot of tough decisions to make. I'd be disappointed if I can't use my garbage disposal. I think, I think that's very, I mean, we've been, all of us have been using garbage disposals for decades. Maybe that, but that's another solution that has to be done through the waste management system, I guess. But in any event, I think this is a good wake-up call to all of us that life as we knew it and handling trash is changing rapidly because these laws are now on the books and are being implemented, and we as a city must comply with them, and we'll have to in the next two years very aggressively. So, so an education process is, and how we can minimize waste. And Mr. Avery's going to lead that.
All right. Ms., yeah, Ms. Brenner, and then we'll go to public comment.
Speaking to Kevin's point about the confusion on this issue, when I toured the sanitation facility, one of the things that was most interesting to me was that an item we put down the disposal that is most problematic for them is eggshells because there's so much calcium in the eggshells that when they get into the wastewater recapture and recycling system, it causes a problem for them. So I think we are all very confused about where we should be putting our different types of waste. And I just wanted to say Councilman Duffield had to leave. My screen is not working. I'm going to move over to Duffy's seat for the remainder of the meeting.
Sounds good. All right. So, okay, we're going to go to public comment on this item. We'll, if you have any public comments on homelessness, John Wayne, or the recycling mandates, please come forward.
Mayor O'Neill and council members and staff, my name is Dennis Baker. First off, sign southbound off-ramp from Newport Boulevard to PCH. There's always, always a person there panhandling. So, and they, they rotate, I don't know, they have shifts or whatever. Okay, so that point. The next thing is on the housing, the homeless housing. So there is a, there is not a hybrid, but you can actually have both. I don't disagree at all with Councilmember Muldoon's statement that it's good to have it within. My reasons would be different than his reasons. My reason would be that we've already shown that a lot of the homeless people have ties to the community, so I'm not sure how beneficial it is to be shipping them to a regional facility. We're not shipping them to Minnesota or out in the desert, as some have proposed, but we'd still be Anaheim, if you're homeless, Anaheim's a long ways from Newport Beach, if that's where your, your community, and that's where your connections are. The hybrid might be that you have, we, each city has their facility, but you have a regional agreement to where if you have beds in Newport Beach and Costa Mesa is crowded or reached capacity, that you have an agreement where they could, you could provide the bed for the homeless person in Costa Mesa or vice versa. So that, that kind of goes a hybrid where you, you have a reg, you don't have one regional facility, but you have the ability to share and work together, and that might meet both the state mandate and the local requirement. mandate and the local requirements, if we find that's there. Moving into the trash thing, okay, I'm old enough, and Mr. Beek is old enough to remember when we didn't have garbage disposals? Okay? So we weren't all raised with the idea of having a garbage disposal. We had a garbage truck that came by, and we had a garbage pail, and so, there is, there are abilities to deal with garbage, other than putting it down the garbage disposal. I have a, I'll end with a question, so that you can answer it at the appropriate time, maybe Director Webb can. CRNR has a very modern, new facility, where they have the digesters, and this type of thing. And my question is this, that we have haulers, we have MRFs, and then now we have digesters, like out there, and are they separate? Right now, we contract with CRNR, so they provide the services. So we give them our trash, and they deal with it. Is that always the case? What, I'm worried about the competition, or lack thereof. So, that's my question. How does it break down? Do we have the flexibility, do we have two, or three, or four possibilities to hire when contracts come up? I don't have anything for or against CRNR, just, I do believe in competition, though, and I wanted to know a little clarification on how that works. Thank you.
Understood. Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Alan Beek. The point that Councilman Muldoon made, I want to emphasize, that on the question of down the disposer, or onto the solid waste, or liquid waste, we need to coordinate with the county, because the county, I think, is giving us extremely contradictory information. They're telling us, don't put any garbage down the disposer, send it all to the recycle, send it to the landfill. If it goes down the disposer, it gets turned into fertilizer ultimately, and is recycled in the big scheme of things. If it goes into the landfill, some people, I guess, think that 40 or 50 years is forever in the future, but landfills do fill up, and have to be recycled into something else. So, we should coordinate with the county, and get the stories together.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, I'm Hua Yan Ye. I really support the green waste, a green can, I think that's a wonderful idea, and we're leading, some other neighbors are not doing that yet. I support the hybrid system, in certain, I mean, on island, yes, you know, too limited space, but in a lot of other areas, I think we can accommodate three cans, so the best is always separate the stuff at the source, that's also the most environmental way to do it. And I want to salute you, Brad, for mentioning zero waste. I think this year, the city will do a lot of things towards zero waste. One, the RINAS number, that's going to push us, I mean, we're going to New York City's direction, we're going to Hong Kong's direction, right? We cannot have this much trash with that many homes. So I was wondering, if we could have some, a series of educational programs through the library, like, you know, Madison in the backyard, that's so successful. So, and I'm also happy to help on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. It's okay, you can come forward.
Mayor O'Neill, my name is Jim Mosher. On these last three issues, the airport, we have an aviation committee that meets monthly, they're gonna be meeting this Monday. The homeless issue, we have a now three-member council committee that was appointed at a meeting a while back. Solid waste, we've heard that there is a three-member council committee, I'm not quite sure how it came into being, but it appears to be very active. The aviation committee meets publicly, so the public knows what's going on. Are either the homeless ad hoc committee of the council, or the solid waste committee, could we be enlightened? Are you planning to have any of your meetings in public, so that we can track what you're doing, and provide input to you?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi. My name is Mary Ann Crowe. I am really interested, and I'm probably pro us partnering with neighboring cities for the homeless shelter, but I'm most concerned about the drug addiction, because I'm just really concerned that we do have a homeless problem, I know we can offer them wraparound services, but we need to mandate those services. And I feel that, just for humane reasons, a lot of the people on our streets, they're just, they're drug addicted. And does drug addiction cause mental illness, or vice versa? I don't know, that's above my pay grade, but the point is, this is what we see, they're violent, they act out, it's happening in this little passive park over here. I mean, you know, you guys see it around your neighborhoods, and I'm in two counties, I live here, but in another county, it's the same thing. Instead of 43 people, there's hundreds in that county, but it's drug addiction. So I guess I'm saying, and it might be a bigger issue than we can deal with right here in these chambers, but I think the police try to do their best, but then they have, isn't drug addiction, and people on the street that are shooting up, isn't that illegal these days? And what does that look like? And that's just a real, it's a burden that I have on my mind, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, David Tanner. Speaking about the diversion of trash, I think we need to look at what's in the city's best interest, when we figure out what we're gonna do with the green waste. The general plan talks about energy independence, so I would like the council, as you're giving direction, to look at what the general plan says, and if we can do something that's in the public's best interest, when we're looking at various alternatives. In terms of the homeless, it's too bad about the Boise versus Martin decision, but we are faced with trying to find ways now to enforce our existing laws. So, I've advocated previously, that we look for city facilities, where we might be able to house these people. It's not illegal to be homeless, it's not illegal for a person to want to sleep out under the stars. As far as I know, we're not mandated to provide them a facility. We see pictures all the time of areas in LA where people are camped out on the street. Could we not provide them a parking lot, maybe in a city facility, fire department or something, and transfer some of those facilities to another storage lot, where they can be given supervision? In terms of the airport, we have two issues that I see. One is the general plan issue, we now have to look at environmental justice. What is the impact of the airport on the city's areas? Is there a concern of environmental justice, particularly under the flight paths, where sensitive receptors are impacted by airport operations? And secondly, I would lobby that the city ask, or pursue, requiring the airport to use best available technologies. This is not precedent-setting. The Port of LA, because of their quality impacts to public health, agreed to implement best available technologies, so I don't see any reason that we should not be lobbying for John Wayne Airport to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mayor and council members, my name is Leonard Simon. I just recently moved to Newport Beach, from Long Beach, where I lived there for 35 years. I want to address the homeless issue, and in particular, the item that Councilmember Brenner brought up, with regard to donations, and not being able to handle them properly. In the city of Long Beach, I'll draw a little bit of a parallel, has nothing to do with homeless people, but we did establish a private-public partnership to fund the arts, it was called the Public Corporation for the Arts. And it was a method, as a nonprofit, to be able to distribute funds to the arts organizations and artists in the city. One might want to look at that model, and perhaps create something similar, to be able to receive funds from donors, and distribute those funds, with a combination of public and guidance, private and public guidance. It's something you might want to look into, and I'd be willing to talk with anyone about that later on.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please, on this topic.
Good morning again, Council George Leslie. Just a question, regarding the homeless count. My wife and I, Gina, were at the presentation about two weeks ago, over here, headed up by Natalie, and at the time, I asked about whether the homeless population was going up or down, or, and the response was, oh, really hard to tell, because it's, there's transients that come and go, depends on the weather, depends on the time of year. But now, we say, well, it's exactly 43. That's about, in about two weeks, it went from 65, maybe, plus or minus, now it's exactly 43. I have a hard time reconciling that difference. I mean, I hope it's 43, it sounds good, but it's a little hard for me to accept that, with a little more explanation. Second of all, regarding the Boise decision, my understanding is that, if we have a shelter available, then you can arrest somebody and take them to jail. But on that, I'm not sure what good does that do? Does the police hold them for a night, two nights, three nights, and then they're back on the street? So what, what good would that alternative do? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, Mayor, and city council members, thank you for what you do. I'm a Newport Beach resident, my name is Rob Stewart. I have met once with Carol Jacobs. I'd like to be perhaps part of the solution for the homeless. I own a, an emergency response company by the name of Intents. We build tents for Cal Fire and Forest Service, and we've got 65 of them. You wouldn't need all 65, but I would be willing, as an owner, to, bottom line, I would just want to be visible as possible to you all, if there was a need for some short-term shelters in Newport, or any of the surrounding cities. My brothers and I would like to divert however many tents you may need, to the cities, and keep them out of our fleet for Cal Fire, and drastically reduce our pricing, to help solve the riddle between people being on the street, and people being able to find permanent housing. Kind of a middle ground there, and it's something that could easily be built up, and be easily taken down. So it's nothing permanent, and, anyway, just wanted to let you know I'm out here.
Thank you. So just, Natalie, would you mind raising your hand? There you go. So, please make sure you connect with Natalie and Carol Jacobs, yep, right behind you. Thank you. All right. Next speaker, please. All right. Bringing it back, answer a couple points. Dennis, MRFs, very competitive, digesters, not as much, but you don't need a digester to comply with the organic waste diversion. There are a number of large haulers trying to figure out how to do that, and so actually, waiting on this has, I believe, created a little bit more competition, but we're still trying to figure out exactly where we can go with that. Mr. Mosher, on the ad hoc question? No, but that's the reason why we've committed to doing public updates, like today, and like we have in many past meetings, on the issue of what we're doing with the cart system, and then homelessness. And I've noticed that people have had no problem whatsoever reaching out and providing input, especially on homelessness. Mr. Leslie, on the homeless count, I'm gonna have to defer, so I'll ask Carol to come back up on that one. And then your question about arresting, that's a policy discussion that honestly would take a very long time to discuss, but I'm happy to discuss with you offline. The answer to the question of what good does it do, I'll just note real quickly, temporary shelters, the reason we talk about permanent supportive housing, temporary shelters have a success rate of bringing someone in and off the streets of low teens. Permanent supportive housing is, tends to be, success rates in the high 80s, low 90 percentage. So if you're trying to do what Mr. Avery was saying earlier, if you're trying to do what's right first, that's where you need to go, but, but at the same time, we said earlier, there's no compassion in leaving people on the streets, so you gotta find ways to bring people up and out. All right. Carol, on the question of the homeless count, though, I want to make sure that you discuss the difference that Mr. Leslie mentioned there.
Sure. So, obviously, you guys know the point in time count was, we had a 64, and so we have been tracking who's been in town for the last 90 days. You know, that count could be off today, from the time I did the report. So it's a very fluid number, but we wanted to give you a sense of those folks that we have had contact with in the next, in the last 90 days. Mostly does not account for folks that may be living in their cars, these are typically the unsheltered. These are folks that we are seeing actually on the streets, not necessarily in cars. We suspect that we have a population in cars that we really haven't addressed, because we've really been focused on the unsheltered.
Okay. Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you. First, I'd like to say that MRF sounds like a friend from college or Boston, so I'll call it the MRF. It's a great start. I think those numbers are probably, I'm noticing less on the streets, and staff has done a good job, but obviously, we're gonna continue until we get that number down to a nominal number. I would like to address the question about jail system. Is the jail system the best place to put these individuals? No, it's not. However, I would say that it is the county seats, and that is often where the focus of the resources are available to these individuals. We have a couple options. One is, we're almost like a receiving center. We temporarily house them, with a city together, a neighboring city, or our own city. We help provide those county services, where a lot of the funding resources and professionals are located. We help them on their merry way. Or if there's someone who doesn't want to get help, this is our way of saying, this kind of behavior is not acceptable in Newport Beach. One, for your sake, we don't want you sleeping on the street, we don't want you doing drugs on the street, we don't want you cold on the street. But also, for our sake, we don't want our children, and our neighbors, to worry about someone who simply wants to take advantage of relaxed laws. So, that's why I personally believe, from my experience as a prosecutor, and from my vision now as a council member, why it is good, in fact, to enforce our laws to the strictest ability possible. Of course, there's a humanitarian component that is very appealing as well, and quite frankly, it's not even an option, because state law is mandating that we deal with this in such, state law and the Boise case, is mandating that we deal with in such a way, within the parameters. But, I am a believer that we have to offer, we can't just say, would you like to stay here tonight? We also have to say, but you can't camp here. And although it is not illegal to be a homeless or trans individual, it is against the local ordinances here in Newport Beach, to spend the night in public places for numerous safety reasons, including the individual's own safety. So that's why I believe in enforcing the laws, which perhaps is jail, which can only really be offered if we have either a location with a neighboring city, or we have a location within our own city, as an alternative.
All right. Ms. Brenner, and then we'll go to the next item. You know what? Why don't?
Okay.
Okay. Yep. Come on up.
My name is Anne Pauley, and I was in France this summer, and in La Havre, I don't, I know, maybe in LA, they went to look at them, but they have all the containers, and they've made them into apartments, and they rent them out to college students for $300 a month. And it looked like a very attractive building, the way they had made it look like, you know, maybe a four-story building, and it was less expensive, they had windows in them, and I know a lot of people have gone to La Havre to look at this, but I don't know if anybody here has done that.
Thank you very much. All right. So, just for anyone else, I'm just gonna let you know, public comments are closed, so, we'll do this, and then we'll go to the next item. All right, Ms. Brenner.
Just speaking to the drug addiction issue, and homelessness, I heard Orange County Sheriff Don Barnes speak, at one point, probably six or eight months ago, and he made the point that he felt like, for those who don't have access to private insurance, to go to a sober living facility in order to get drug addiction treatments, that he felt that they, at the Orange County Jail, were the best place for them, because they actually were addressing this. Now, I believe there was a court challenge to that, and I'm not sure where it stands right now, but I'm hoping maybe one of you know.
Okay. I don't know. Okay. Yeah. All right. Thank you very much. The next item should be very quick. City council meeting dates, I'll turn to our city manager for the brief discussion.
Just very briefly, I just wanted to potentially have a discussion, well, okay, on, in August, by charter, we have one meeting date in August, and I think it typically, we've had it the first, no, the first meeting was we've had it the first, no, the first meeting was dark, and the sec, we'd have it for the fourth Tuesday of the August month, I think, kind of in, syncing with vacations and school calendars, to have kind of the last hurrah before coming back to work, sort of thing. And with the school years, a lot of them are moving forward, and in fact, Newport Mesa is looking at starting in late August now with their, their school calendar date. So a suggestion is to move the one meeting in August to the first meeting. Am I right?
First meeting?
No, to the second, yeah, to, yes, yes, to the, the, the fourth Tuesday in August, to have it at the back end of August, so that, like, a summer season would be through the, the beginning part of August. So instead of having the one meeting in August to be that first, that, the second Tuesday in August, to be the fourth Tuesday. I think I'm making this more confusing than, than it should be. And then secondly, in November, because of the, the holidays that, that occur, particularly Thanksgiving holiday, it had worked nicely in 2019 to move from being the second and fourth Tuesdays to do the first and the third, which generally works, except we're in an election year where the first Tuesday in November is Election Day, and we do, it's, it's a national election. So right now, we have the calendar to be the second and the fourth Tuesday, so just want to note that, that fourth Tuesday is Thanksgiving week, which I know can be challenging, but that's how, that's why we're set up now. It's just to have a brief discussion if there's some changes you'd want to consider for that.
I'll just point out, I'm, I'm not the one who asked to move the meeting in August, even though that would be phenomenal for me. I, it's just, it's the, I, I didn't, I didn't ask for, even though I've got kids in school, I didn't ask for the change, but I do love it. So I would be in favor of that, and I'm sure, I'm sure can and will be too next year. Anyway, so that would be great. I, I, I think we should keep it in November where it is. I know the frustration, but on balance, I would very much like to not have our meeting on a, at a, on a presidential election night. All right, Ms. Brenner.
I'm fine with November's schedule as it is, but I did want to mention, the meeting in August, as your kids get a little bit older, you're going to find when they're in junior guards and other summer activities, the only week that our family could find to do a family vacation was the very end of the summer, the week before school started. So we were able to get all ten of us together and do the family vacation, but it was that exact week in August, so.
So, so the reason that she's asking for this is because Newport Mesa has now changed their schedule to, to start the last week of August?
So when will they be starting?
The last week of August.
So if they start the twenty-fourth, then the last week of summer vacation would be the week prior to that?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
And our junior guard's schedule will be changing because of that also?
It'll be done by August eleventh?
Okay, that would work then.
Okay. Yeah. Ms. Dixon, go ahead.
I guess I would just suggest, we don't have to put this as policy, but during election years, to, to, I support what you've just said, to move it to Thanksgiving, but the years that we don't have elections and, and the meeting is not during Thanksgiving week, I just know over the years I've been on the councils, people travel for Thanksgiving, and it would be nice not to have the council meeting two days before Thanksgiving. But obviously, I, I do support the, when we move it back because of election year.
Yep, that's, sounds good.
I think that, the other thing to note is we have Veterans Day that second week of November, too. So we have two weeks where you have a holiday and a council meeting happening in both those weeks. So I, I would agree with that.
All right. Okay. All right. Right to the members of the public. Anyone would like to speak about our council meetings? Oh, Mr. Mosher. Council meeting schedule.
Mayor O'Neill, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. This is, is a kind of a curious item. If you were to go back and review our council minutes back to 1906, you would notice that for the first hundred years of the city, August was a normal business month for the city. And in fact, August was often a rather busy business month for the government of the city. This idea that the council only has to meet once in August is a quite new idea. It did get into our city charter, although that was along with thirty-eight other things, and I don't think many people voting. They had to single vote yes or no on all thirty-eight. I don't know that many of them were aware that they were making this change. And then finally, if you feel really burdened, I would remind you once again, there are other cities in California whose charters require the council to meet every week, all year long. Not only big cities, not only big cities like Los Angeles or San Francisco, but little cities like Santa Barbara, very comparable to us in land area and population. They meet every week, all year long, and there are more than that. So you're, you're not really overburdened as it is. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. That's, okay. So any other public speakers on this? All right, we'll bring it back. Let's probably at some point bring a, a resolution changing the August meeting. All right. Next item is CIP. I'll just note for everyone, the draft CIP is not out yet. The, we will be having a study session in March, Mr. Webb, on the CIP? Okay, in March? Yeah, okay. So that will be a far more robust discussion than what we're about to hear. And then I know we have a couple of conflicts just to note, so we'll go Ms. Brenner first.
Because of real property interest, I need to recuse myself because of the Grant-Howell Park restoration.
When we get to that point, we'll have you, no, 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 just.
Not the whole time.
No, no, no. You don't get out of it that easily. All right. Mr. Hurdman.
I'll have to recuse myself on three items that have to do with Babwa Island, the drainage system, and the drainage system, and the drainage system. Thank you.
Okay. When we get to those slides, then, then, yeah, we'll let you know. Anyone else? Okay. Oh, yeah. All right. Good. Mr. Muldoon.
I'm looking at my, this is my conflict list right here. This is crazy. By the way, I'm no longer employed by the NCD that was involved in telecommunications, but let's just be safe on this. There are a couple of issues that because of my, my prior employment in telecommunications industry, I have recused myself on. I'll continue to do so, just out of bias of caution, although it's not a force, source of income anymore. Santa Ana and Avon sidewalk and slope improvement, which could include possible undergrounding. City streetlight rehabilitation and LED lamping. This actually is due to my real property interests where I live at, my, my residence, my home. West Coast Highway landscape improvements. I previously recused myself on 428 due to telecom business interest. Traffic signal rehabilitation project. Recuse myself because streetlights could be used for alternative methods of communicating over telecom, but it's not for sure. Grant-Howell Park rehabilitation, recuse myself due to design, due to potential location of small cells, what that should be. Superior Avenue Bridge and Parking Lot, recuse myself item because for the second iteration, staff included a utility underground component at Sunset View Park. Advanced water metering infrastructure, I recuse myself on this item because of water metering can use licensed spectrum. Underground utility assessment districts, which I wish I was always recused on because those are always fun to deal with. I have a conflict due to telecommunications related to eighty-one-eleven, eighty-one-thirteen, and eighty-one-sixteen, eighty-one-sixteen B, and eighty-one-eleven, one-seventeen, those are all different communities requesting undergrounding. And then Lido Fire Station, because staff drawings had included a potential small cell location at the new location, I previously recused myself on that item. So for those items, I'll be stepping out. Thank you.
Well, you might actually get out of this pretty easily. Okay. Mr. Webb, I've taken a look, quick look through your, your PowerPoint. My suggestion would be not to go through each, and maybe just put it up on the, on the page and see if people want to talk about specific ones.
How about if I suggest, I'll just go to the page if you have any questions on the first seven slides that are just really remedial for a lot of people to ask questions. So to start off on our, our capital improvement program, we're gonna talk about a few projects of current interest, and I'll just go by categories, and if there's any questions on this slide, this has to do with our facility improvements. By the way, this isn't all our projects, and we're happy to answer any questions that aren't up here. This is just the primary ones that people have been asking about.
Counsel, any questions on this first slide? All right.
This is our street and drainage program. There's a couple of slides on this, this current projects.
How would you like to handle the conflict?
So we'll just have people step out if there's questions regarding the specific projects that they have a conflict on.
Thank you. All right. Real quick, I forgot to ask, do we, is, do we have copies of this at the front, at the front?
Yes, we do.
We do? Okay. Okay. All right. I just want to make sure I'm leaving sufficient time for members of the public to read it as well. Counsel, any questions on this slide? Okay.
Some more street and drainage projects.
Counsel member Brenner, quick question on the second item. How's the, how's the public outreach been going on that? And do you think we've got sufficient amount to start this design? Oh. Oh, no, I'm, this is, this is Ocean Boulevard.
Oh. That's gonna be coming back to us with a lot more public input.
Okay. That's what I needed to know. All right. All right. Counsel, any questions on this item? All right.
In our transportation group.
Yeah, just, of course.
Let's go back a slide, please.
The last item, last two items, because I know there are people in the audience are very concerned about these items. Dave, would you just want to give a quick update?
Real quick, the last two items, the West Coast Highway Landscaping, give you just a minute here.
So what we're gonna be doing, Ms. Dixon, is if there's a question about an item that a council member has a conflict on, they'll, they'll get up and walk out, just that way. Okay. All right, go ahead.
Back in November, the council awarded this project. This has to do with phase two and three, construction of new landscaping from Newport Boulevard down to about Cappy's Restaurant in that area. We've currently got all the permits. We've awarded. We're ready to start construction in January. We do have a hiccup. Caltrans snuck in on us. You've probably noticed a temporary lane closure, closure out there. They have a problem with their drainage system. They're trying to dig out. We have an impact because we need to close lanes, too, and we're concerned it'd be just down to one lane on West Coast Highway. So we're trying to get information on them to move their project or get it done, and then we'll start right behind them, or change our phasing so we can get going. But we, it is high on our radar. We know a lot of people want to see this project go, and we're pushing on it.
Very good. Thank you.
As for the West Newport Landscaping, this was a project council added in last year at the community's request. This has to do with probably improvements on Pacentia, up at the northern border with Costa Mesa. We're currently in the design of that project. We're hoping to get that under construction next year and, and have that in place for you by the end of the summer 2021.
Okay. We'll go to the next slide.
Let me ask you one question. Mr. Hurdman was just asking me, too, on the transportation and crosswalks. If I recall, the timing is really contingent because of the Lido Fire Station build, and you're gonna be doing those crosswalk improvements at the same time.
Yes, actually, I was gonna talk to this project specifically. This is phase two, and it's part of that construction.
Good. Yeah. And that ties them both together, and that makes sense.
Yes.
Mr. Avery, Mr. Avery.
Thank you. Dave, going back to the first page, Cliff Drive Park Clubhouse, there'll be some opportunity for some public input on design?
There could be. This is a relatively simple project. We were, we were gonna put it back. You see the picture below? It's reached its useful life. It's, there's no bathrooms or anything in there. We're working with the recreation, pretty much put the clubhouse back as it is. Unless there's a desire to the community, we weren't looking to expand it or make it bigger, add cost, just.
So no change to the look, to the design?
I think it'll look pretty much like that. And of course, with new building codes, efficiency, things like that, but we're not expanding the building.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Let's go back to the slide that has at its top. Yep, that one. Any, any questions from counsel on this slide? Okay, next slide. Harbors, Beaches, and Parks area? The American Legion, I believe, has come and talked to most of us, representatives, to discuss the issue of funding. That would probably be something we'll need to bring back to talk about what the, I'm not sure what, where we stand on any of that discussion.
It's not on the bulkhead, though.
Oh, that's not the bulkhead?
This is the bulkhead cap, and it's currently in your CIP. It's funded under titans.
Oh, got it.
We have to do a repair on the cap.
Got it. Okay. Mr. Avery.
Newport Pier rehabilitation, if you will. Is that down there? Fort Pier?
Referring to the last one on the picture.
Yeah, the last one. So just, does this involve a restaurant, or is that not in this?
This does involve the negotiations. We're talking about putting a new restaurant in. This has to do with replacing all the old seventy-year-old piles underneath the current restaurant, and we were waiting to get that deal so that we could remove the old restaurant, do the pile work, and then put the new restaurant on top. It's tied to that permitting of the new restaurant.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Next slide.
Two categories here, water quality, and there are water and wastewater.
Oh, I didn't realize we were that far ahead on the advanced, oh, sorry, I won't get it. No, no, it's okay. Good. Okay. Any questions, counsel?
Yeah, I do.
Mr. Avery.
On the Arches Storm Drain Dry Weather Diversion, so this, this is the same one that's the, in the sort of a constant issue in terms of pollution getting in the harbor.
Yeah, this has to do with the permanent bacteria closures that are near, near the Turning Basin.
Right.
And this will divert two big storm drains that are coming out of Costa Mesa and Upper Newport that have high bacteria levels. So we're just about done with our Caltrans permits, and we'll get started on the construction.
It's a good one for the harbor.
All right. Any other questions? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Brenner.
Dave, on the Carnation Avenue Sewer Main replacement, can you just give us a little bit more information about that?
Yeah, this is, as we got into Ocean Boulevard, and we were gonna replace the pavement, we also have a very old sewer on Carnation Avenue that drains down and takes care of that track. So we wanted to replace that just before the pavement, get it in, and then put the new pavement on top. This is the replacement of that sewer.
Okay. And that's, is it failing, or is it necessary just because of its age?
It's just age. There's no failing on it. It's got little sags and things, and we wouldn't want to have a new street over. It's gotta be about seventy, eighty years old now, sewer there.
Okay. All right.
All right. Okay, next slide.
And then we had a miscellaneous column here. I would point out the last project. We've had a lot of questions recently on eighty-one-seventeen. That is just about done. We're just waiting for cut-ins.
Sorry, just a moment. I'm sorry. Okay, go ahead.
We have seven properties need to cut in for the audience. We've gotten a lot of calls, and it's, as soon as they cut over, they'll start removing the poles.
Say that again, and maybe a little bit. It's okay. Yeah, why don't you take a moment on that one?
So these are the residential cut-ins. When we do the undergrounding, before they can take the wires down, they have to get all the people to cut their own residential service over from the property, the new underground system. Once they pay for that, it's a private operation, then the utilities can now energize the new underground system, de-energize the overhead, and take it down. So seven remaining. Once those are done, we can start taking poles out.
What, what, you're about to ask the same question. What can we do to get them to do that?
We are nudging and reminding, and some folks, these always, there's a couple of stragglers in every district, and we are touching them and say, how can we help you? They have to actually hire a electrician. They have to go to community development, pull a building permit, because oftentimes it takes a new electrical panel. And this is that usually twenty-five to five thousand dollar cost we talk about. So I truly don't want to put their names out there, but we're, we're touching base with them and making sure that.
I'm not asking to shame people.
No, we are, we are.
Yet, yet. But I'm, I'm, I'm just saying, I, it is, it is, I will say, I think it's absurd that seven people are holding up that entire project. All right, Ms. Brenner.
I was wondering how we could compel, are we, is there a way for us to compel them to do that?
There is. We'd truly like it to be voluntary, but you could eventually take an action because you've.
We do have that ability.
But then there's a due process, process that kicks in, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, honestly, I think we should start that process. Mr. Hurdman.
Just curious if the process is still, for, I know that when we did the Little Island, there was one individual who refused to participate in that. And my understanding was that the city did it, but placed a lien on the property. Is that still an alternative?
We could go down that road. We've done it before, but again, and probably take a council action. There's a whole due process on leaning a person's property.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, any other? All right. All right, we'll bring Mr. Muldoon back, and then we'll go to the next slide. This, at our next council meeting, we're going to have a formation of an ad hoc committee for the, for the negotiations on the city's, city side. Just FYI, that's on our consent calendar for the next council meeting.
So these next series of slides, I can go through rather quickly. They're higher-level projects, a lot of them have been in front of council recently. This one, as you see, has already been to council this year. This is the library lecture hall. I think the key points here are, as the mayor just pointed, we need to talk about how we deal with the MOU with the funding. The other question for the council, probably in the finance committee, is this is currently not in our FFP. It's about an eight million dollar project, and we'll have to talk about that once we resolve the funding. Our goal is to bring this back to council in midsummer to, with the concept and the funding agreement, hopefully, which would then put a target start about winter twenty twenty.
All right, the goal, just as a side note, as we discussed last time, is for the ad hoc committee to bring back a proposal on a, on an MOU that would have a series of milestones. But just, that's just as a quick reminder. All right?
So our next project we have on here is our Lito Fire Station, which folks.
Just a moment, just a moment.
I'm sorry, excuse me, forget recusals.
Okay, go ahead.
A lot of interest in the community about this project, as you know that it went to council for the concept design in November of last year. Again, this is a nine point five million dollar project, this is in the FFP. So we're currently working on two design packages. And the one, first one I referred to, Councilmember Dixon talked about, this is the second phase of the pedestrian improvements, but we added the needed signal in there at Twenty-Eighth and Newport Boulevard. That project is set to go out in fall. And then the other one is the building onsite package itself, which is set to go out probably in winter of twenty twenty. A note on this, we're trying to set up maybe a groundbreaking in winter of twenty twenty, if we can put all the pieces together.
Dave, is there any chance we could go back to the brick design for the fire station?
That would be up to your colleagues, I think we approved another concept, the Lito Design.
Yeah. Fire stations, you know?
Yeah, I like, I like the look, so, all right, next slide.
Our next project up here is our Junior Guards Building. We're currently working through this. The council looked at this briefly on April ninth to kind of get an option, we had three options we were pursuing. The direction then was to, basically, they preferred Site Two if we can make it work, which I have a little picture in the bottom to remind folks. Also, to keep the costs as low as possible. We talked about a three point three million dollar project at the time, plus some site improvements, and also making it parking neutral. We've been working with the junior guard staff and the lifeguards, the foundation, I believe, on that. So right now, this project is not in the FFP, and I correct that, it, I look back and it was in the FFP, but it shows as private funding, so there's some discussion there still on how to do it, because the April meeting, council discussed about an all-in three point six million dollar project, three hundred thousand was some site improvements we have to do, but a three point three million dollar building project with about two point two coming from the city and one point two seven five coming from private funds. So at your next meeting, as the mayor alluded to in the last lecture hall, we're going to have another discussion about creating an ad hoc and developing an MOU with the organizations to provide private funding. If that's the case, then maybe the concept can get back to the council maybe in spring of twenty twenty for review, and once that's approved, it goes into design and coastal permitting. This will be a challenging one because it's on the coastals area, right on the beach there, and it's always tricky to work with them.
All right.
Next, next project we're working on, we have it in.
Sorry, just a moment, yep, Jeff, this one's you, yep. So just a moment. Okay, go ahead.
So this, this project has to do with the drainage of Babo Island, and I've got some slides here just to kind of remind people what we're dealing with. The interesting one is that one down the far left corner, that was Thanksgiving Day this year. We're developing and refining a master plan on how to maybe move the island to a new pumping drainage system. We've had a couple of public meetings now with the entire island on December fourteenth and January fifteenth to get comments in regard to a lot of infrastructure improvements, but primarily the drainage of the island. The leading thought right now is to go to something like this, maybe it, and this is pretty common in a lot of low-lying cities, we just have a system that was built in the early nineteen hundreds, to go to a pump system where we'd have maybe two pumps on the island, collect it through a series of underground pipes, and discharge it off the island versus the current system where it basically runs gravity into street, small hole at the end, we have manual tide valves that we have to operate through the utilities crews. So the advantage is, as we pointed out to them, if we automate the system, we've got discharge protection twenty-four seven. It provides high-year flow pump out, basically a hundred-year storm design is, is the key we'd like to go to. We don't have that now, as you see, we have light rains, the streets flood. It greatly reduces the amount of labor and equipment to operate the system. We spent a lot of time opening and closing valves on the island, including the peninsula has tide valves too. Picture of one, if you don't know what a tide valve is, right on there. And again, I would comment, for instance, both holidays this year and last year, I know the utilities and public works crews were out early in the morning, we had a rains, there was like twenty-four people operating these valves and pumps, and we could barely keep up. That's an ongoing basis, so. The other thing is it improves water quality, because with a pumping system, we could screen out trash and debris before it gets discharged off the island. And then on a low-flow system like they do now, a lot of the, just the dribble that's coming down is picked up and diverted to the sewer, and it doesn't go out to the bay, so those are very positive improvements. Our next steps we see would be to finalize that draft concept, again, that's in the current CIP to develop that. We'd want to bring that back to council with the cost and phasing program. And from there, if we get direction, then we'd go ahead and start implementing probably Phase One, which is probably the pump on the west side. I'm sorry, any questions on that?
Okay, Mr., we'll just wait a moment, Mr. Hurdman, you can come back in.
All right. Our next project we wanted to talk a little bit about was our lower harbor dredging, just to keep people informed on this. We've been working on this for many years now, and working with the Army Corps of Engineers to basically dredge out about one point two million cubic yards of built-up sediment, which is causing navigational and tidal water quality issues with our harbor. We're talking about an open disposal plan right now to take the material out and take it, legally dispose it in the ocean, but there may be a small amount that have to do an in-harbor disposal that we're also working on, and I can talk to that if you need more information. Right now, the project, we estimate is about twenty-three million dollars. The city's kind of stepped up and has in its budget now four point six million dollars, about twenty percent. We told the federal government, even though they're a hundred percent responsible, we'd contribute. And we're looking at, currently in the work plan right now, the feds have two million dollars towards the project. We're trying to get that changed, and we've had some recent efforts on that. Current status to date is that we've spent about one point three million dollars towards getting this project ready to launch, including doing sediment characterization studies, sediment management plans. We did an economic analysis for the feds to show the nature of the harbor and how much generate, revenues generated through both general revenue and tax revenue. We're working on the environmental document currently, it's going out for limited EIR, we're scoping that right now. And pre-engineering and design's already been taken, and as soon as we get the environmental done, we can go into that phase. We're also engaging the federal government at all levels, basically the legislations and the various regulation agencies to try to secure that funding. And right now, we're currently tracking to be there in about twenty twenty-one, it would be the project. Any questions on this? Go ahead.
You're still doing community engagement on this, correct?
We are, and my next slide will talk a little bit about that, our next steps, but we are, we are engaging the community. We've been talking to everybody we can, including all the islands, the harbor groups, the mariners, we've talked to the chamber, we've even talked to the environment, or environmental organizations. The good news is, we've had pretty much positive support on all the agencies, including the environmental folks that usually don't necessarily like all their projects, but they really support this project. There is one community working with right now that still has some concerns, particularly about the in-harbor disposal. Once we get that, we'll have to, once the SEAC was done on that, again, we complete the SEAC and the regulatory permits, we'll be looking to move this towards construction, and then we will work with that corps hand in hand for the construction of the project.
All right, Mr. Avery.
Just a comment, it's, it's quite, you know, twenty-three million that ultimately we hope to get from the federal government, and the city's going to put in four million, a little more. And when it's all done, you don't notice anything different about the harbor, and that's one of the toughest things about this, but this is a vitally important project because we need to maintain the harbor, right now that we're not down to the design depth of the harbor, and when you dredge, the water flow through the harbor picks up markedly. So this is an environmental issue, and it's also an issue of maintaining a very vibrant harbor where boats can pass easily, and we need to stay ahead of it because as storms come and fills the harbor gradually, we don't want to get to a place where we really need to dredge, we need to stay ahead of it. We can't wait for it to be a problem for the, for the harbor. So this is a far, looking far ahead. Hopefully, the funding happens in the next year or two, but it's hard to tell, and we're making a big effort to, to secure that funding through our friends in Washington. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Brenner.
Could someone speak to our efforts with Congressman Harley Ruda's office and what kind of support we're getting there?
Yes, I could actually, we've been working closely with the congressman, he's actually been engaged in this project, did some recent discussion at the various committees up on the Hill, and supported the project. He is one of the folks that we are targeting, he's helping to try to secure that funding. I do know we had the, our, some of our folks, if they want to talk about, we had an vacation trip just recently, and we're working with the White House, the various agencies on that right now, I don't, I don't know.
So I'm, I'm going to ask, so that was, that was Councilmember Duffield and Mayor Protem Avery. I would actually, because they went back on a, on a city-sponsored trip, it'll be good for them to do, to do that briefing real quickly during city council announcements at the meeting on Tuesday.
That'd be great.
Could also be good, because we're bumping up against noon anyway. But then, okay?
Yep.
Okay, all right, let's go to the next slide, which I'm going to, we're going to move through these fairly quickly, because some of these are actually coming up on council agendas, and also will be a subject of discussion at the actual draft CIP discussion, so. Any, we've already discussed a couple of these already, this is the discussion of status and funding. Let's go to the next slide. The first item will be on our study session on Tuesday, which is Newport Height Neighborhood Pedestrian and Bicycle Improvements. If you have any discussion on that, or thoughts on that, please do come to the study session or provide them to us before the study session on Tuesday. The, the next two we've discussed, so we'll go to the next slide. Discussed, previously discussed. We'll have to discuss the third item at the, when we go to CIP. And the other question marks.
Just didn't know, I didn't know if it gave anything else.
Go ahead, no, no, I'm just kidding.
Always leave it open for you.
Yeah, no, 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 no.
I have a conflict on the side.
Yeah.
On the other?
The question marks are a telecommunications item. Anyway, so, all right, well, appreciate that. Any other questions or comments up here? Ms. Brenner.
Could we just say congratulations to our Public Works Department? You guys are incredible in the amount that you do and the, the style with which you do it, and the least inconveniences possible to the public is really appreciated.
Thank you.
All right, let's go out to public comment on this item of the CIP.
Good day again, so as I brought up before, I'm suggesting that you direct staff to study the increased amount of purple pipe distribution in the city. We've talked about it before, this is a time to direct them to explore it. I know that there's water available from Irvine Ranch Water District as well as Orange County Water District. Thank you.
Thank you, all right, next speaker, please.
My name is Gina Leslie. I'm disappointed to see there is not a Phase Four for the Pacific Coast Highway as a future project. This time, it would not include as much the median as it would in front of the trailer park. I would, number one, that sidewalk along there is extremely narrow, and there is a row of telephone poles in the middle of it. You could not push a wheelchair along there, it's tough to get a stroller, and a lot of us try and walk down and go to the riverbed. I know we're not supposed to be on the sidewalk with our bicycles, but that little end street, a lot of us do do that. I would also like to see the city write a letter to the person that owns that mobile home park, considering she collects a thousand dollars a month. The last time I counted, there's thirty to forty trailers in there. I think she could afford to build a new fence along there, at least in the front. I also think down by, below Sunset Park, that sidewalk is asphalt. Where do you put asphalt in a city? I think that should be a new regular sidewalk with the back on it so that the sandbags all along there could go away. I have been meeting with Caltrans about some of the improvements along there. They put those K-rails in there twenty years ago as a temporary situation. They are talking about sending out an engineer to see if they even need to be there. If not, I told them I think they ought to build a wall that looks somewhat decent. I did talk to Mike Senicori, mostly because he lives in my neighborhood. I have another meeting with them in February, and I would appreciate if someone from the city go with me. So maybe someone, some of this can be worked out between the two, so I would like you to support that. In my first meeting with Caltrans, they asked me if the city would consider buying that. I know in two thousand and eleven, it was talked about, but the Caltrans wanted a ridiculous amount of money, which when we bought Corona Del Mar, it was a lot cheaper. But she said it's an entirely different atmosphere at this point, and she thinks the price would be a lot cheaper. I told her this is way above my pay grade, that I wouldn't have anything to do with that, but maybe the city would like to contract Caltrans, see if that's, I don't know if you're interested or not. Anyway, I really would like to see you put Phase Four on the budget. I thought it was a, a given that it was going to be on the budget. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Leslie. Next speaker, please.
I'm going, yep. Synthetic turf came to council before. One time was doing the pesticide study session, those bunch of Irvine experts came here and said it was not a good idea. And another time, I mean, I was never part of this, I never spoke on this, but someone emailed me a whole long email, asked me to come here to tell you it's not a good idea, it's plastic, we should have covered that, and, anyway. So I just wanted to say that I was asked to say it's not good.
Thank you very much. All right, next speaker, please. Okay, we'll bring her back, she was, she was referencing the Royal Synthetic Turf Field. All right, okay, Ms. Dixon.
Just to follow up on Ms. Leslie's question, Dave, so status of Phase Four, Mobile Home Park and Caltrans?
So Phase Four, if, for those who don't know, when the cab met on this many, many years ago, they talked about going to the Santa Ana River, and Phase Four would be, take it from, let's say, Orange Street to Santa Ana River, which includes that park. That was the most expensive phase, it included art decor, changing the K-rail down the middle. It's never been actually been able to fund it, given all the other needs we have. We have worked with Caltrans, we've heard about the sidewalk, they've talked about maybe widening the sidewalk. There could be the ability to plant, maybe the city would do the planting, I don't think Caltrans would plant for us in front of the Mobile Home Park. Maybe a different type of project there, but currently, it's not in the budget, just because there's not enough money to keep going.
So we've really never have done, we've never done scoping on this phase?
We had it in original concept many, many years ago, that just had a real high-level concept of what might be to do there. I think there's been talk about the trailer park itself and what might come out of that and what they can do. I think it'd be more challenging to remove the K-rail over the bridge and that, and you might be able to do something. I've seen decorative, but it's expensive. State's strapped, as you know, and getting, getting revenue and money out of them to do this project.
They're strapped, they've got a twenty-two billion dollar surplus.
I will see the insides of their pockets when I talk to them. I am talking with their director here in the next month, and I'll put up the sidewalk and that on there, but it'd be council's choice if you want to keep moving it, we have a lot of landscape projects in our CIP now, we've been trying to address many areas of the community.
My personal recommendation, I guess we'll discuss this during the CIP process, just to keep it alive in some form, so we keep talking about it and see where it could fit in and how we could do it.
Okay. All right, seeing no other requests for speaking, we'll finish the meeting by just saying to all of our staff in particular, thank you for being here on a Saturday morning to work through this. Hopefully, you've gotten a little bit more perspective on some of our thoughts, but thank you for being here. Fellow councilmembers, same thing, thank you. And to the members of the public who stuck it out, I really appreciate it. Your input is valuable. On Tuesday, starting at four o'clock, we have our study session, and then at seven o'clock, we have our, our regular general meeting. Thank you so much.